But that power and by the wisdom of God, this city is going through change. It's already, we decree it's already starting, and it will accelerate, and nothing will stop it. We bless Bogalusa, we bless the city council, we bless the mayor, the chief of police, the fire chief, and all the city government who blessed this meeting, thanks for your presence here, that your will will be done. Wisdom to the participants, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please say, "Stand up." Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. Change, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thy regime.
This is Bogalusa City Council meeting, this is a non-business meeting, we have another form, go ahead and have a little call. Sorry, sorry.
Councilwoman, it's noon. Councilwoman, it's eight. President, President.
Before we start, no business can be discussed at this time, we're going to skip to Agenda Item. On here, there'll be public participation, which is Agenda Item number nine. We're going to skip, skip. We're going to have our first public participation, you will have... To state your name and address for the record, your two minutes will start. Keep in mind that if you're here to talk about a particular agenda item later in our business session, that we will also have a hearing for that for each agenda item. So, now we're having public, regular public participation. We have a first name, Mrs. Debbie Corsetti. If you will please come forward, Mrs. Corsetti, please state your name and address for the record. Once you state your name and address for the record, it will be given two minutes.
You have a form?
No, I mean come on forward. We're discussing non-business, this is non-business items.
Deborah Corsetti, 764 Marshall Street. Okay, this time put a little work in my notes here, if I can't talk about anything that's on the agenda.
No, you can discuss, you can discuss anything, you can't make a comment about.
Oh, okay. Well, I think comments in my, so I'll give about two more minutes. Okay, so I'm going to watch these real quick then, and their comments about I reviewed the agenda, and these are my comments. On page five, talking about the parade fees, there's a section for up to fifty people, and then a section for one hundred and more. What happens to the fifty-one through ninety-nine? I think we need to do something about adjusting the gap there, because there's people left out of the rules. Those were just some grammatical and spelling errors. Okay, on page, looks like five. Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go. On page thirteen, "R greater" is at the end of a sentence that's referring to chaperones and juveniles. That "R greater" dangling there makes it unclear if you need more, if it means the number of chaperones are greater, or the number of juveniles are greater. So that needs to be moved up. On page fourteen, exemptions from parade fees, any peaceful march. I don't think we might can predetermine if a march is going to ultimately be peaceful. They might continue to start off peaceful, but you just never know what happens there. I think more reasonable would be like no charge for demonstrations or marches that are protected by federal rights. And I personally don't understand why any parade would have exemptions. I think they all pay the fees. There's a big difference, I understand, between fifty dollars for horse riding clubs and two hundred and fifty dollars for motorcycle clubs. So that's a little confusing. Let's see. Okay, what, it talks about the chief of police determining if a parade is not allowed to roll due to implement weather. What happens to the fees that are submitted already? There's no mention of that, and they just leave their fees if they paid and we don't get to roll. Where it says, on page sixteen and seventeen, there's talking about payment to the city of Bogalusa. It's got a payment covenant to the city of Bogalusa for fees. I would move that for fees before the covenant, because you don't really want that on the check, do you? Page eighteen, the company's name is I-3, not thirteen, so I would correct that in a contract, so I would definitely correct that. Also on that same contract, they have Kenny Calis as the president instead of Mark.
Thank you, Mrs. Corsetti. All right, Mr. Richard Corsetti, you'll have two minutes, please state your name and address for the record. Your two minutes will start after you state your two minutes, so.
Richard Corsetti, 764 Marshall Street, Councilman Richard, President. Good evening, everyone. The only thing I have to say tonight is we have a lot of four-wheelers and motorbikes and everything riding it on the weekends and stuff during the holiday. I think, I'm not against none of that. I mean, I think it's great when I see everyone getting together. I mean, I seen twenty-three of them going by me. Okay, I kind of, I think it's great, and I think the kids have a lot of fun. And I think we should pass something, maybe Sunday night from four to six or something like that, that they're allowed to ride. I see they must fix them up and make them run and everything else, and I think it's a good thing for our kids to do that stuff. So, if they're not breaking any laws or anything like that, I think we should have like a four to six ride for them to officially take them for a run and enjoy it and put them back up, that way they don't have any problem. Just let me know, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corsetti. Martin Austin, senior. Good afternoon, Mr. Austin. As you're coming forward, you will have two minutes, starting after you state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Martin Austin, 764 Evans Avenue. First of all, I think y'all really need to up that two minutes, because the people that are just taking their own bathroom, but it's not really pretty sustainable, y'all really need to get this done. On the second thing, I like remembering what the man was saying about these kids, I promise my grandchild, do the right thing, don't be off these streets. I thought it was the other night, it wasn't. I came down South Flavers Street, and it was a cobble block with no lights on. These kids need somewhere to go, to rally. We got a city that has a lot of problems. You got a place right behind Burger King, if I could take my kids back there to practice football, it would be ideal. I would find the gentleman down here coming, they go to Mississippi, they have a place up there, they charge eighty-five cents for twenty-five hours, the city could make a while. I would get into these areas, we know where they're at, they're nine hours free students, they need some place to go. And I think, council cooperate with our mayor, and his staff, we can move some things in Bogalusa, because people, I hear all that, they tell, they live again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cindy Oleson. Mr. Miller, are you in here?
No.
Cook, Bird.
Oh, they're birds, oh, that'd be important.
He's going to speak on the phone. Donnie Sullivan.
Donnie Sullivan, 642 Union Avenue. I have a question, it's not related to the agenda tonight, I wonder if that two hundred grand that was taken out of the water deposit account last year has been put back in yet? I guess y'all can answer, huh? Has the two hundred grand that was taken out of the sea water deposit account last year been put back in yet? What?
Right, right, what?
Well, that means that we have a Louisiana region that was taken out from the heat with it.
Sir, we have already passed this out with the Louisiana Legislature of Order, they told us what to do moving forward, we can't go backwards, we can only go forward. It will be replaced by the end of the fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay, I'll be watching.
Are you going to want to speak on Agenda Item?
Yeah, on Agenda Item.
Okay, this man, this night in our business meeting, we're working on getting our form on any more person. Good afternoon, Mr. Roberts, please state your name and address for the record, your two minutes will start after you state your name and address.
Tobias Roberts, 1127 Avenue, J. I'm tired of coming to these councils, meeting precincts, same as, we suffer from the same city of Bogalusa, been suffering from, leadership. Bogalusa need leadership. We don't need politicians. Politician is a fake word for a leader, they stand in the place of a leader when they can't do the city no good. We need people who gonna include everybody, not exclude different people on the cover of, because I don't like them, or whatever. Bogalusa suffering on account of some of these people who say that they here to help Bogalusa. Action speak louder than words. I don't believe in nothing that come out your mouth. I know you're lying, and the people around you, they're lying too. No, it's the truth.
You just like to make her. Just, just to dress everyone, just to dress everybody, if you might.
It's addressing everybody, I ain't calling no names. Let it fall away now, whoever offended, I'm talking to you. If you offended, I'm talking to you, I ain't calling no names. I'm addressing everybody, everybody who call themselves a leader of Bogalusa could be the city. You're lying over here, you're lying over there, but guess what, all the lies gonna catch up with you. The wrong they do to people, the way they treat people, all that's gonna catch up with you. Everybody's funny, whoever they may be, ain't nobody better than the other person, some of y'all think y'all special. If you were here bad before, y'all don't watch, but I'm speaking to the people in Washington, come get them, please, because people do better down here. We can do a lot better down here. If you can't do it here, you definitely can't do it in Washington. Politician, we need leaders, we don't need politicians in Bogalusa. It's a new day.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Keith Merrill.
Oh, wait till the... You wish to speak on Agenda Item, so it's a right... Next, we got...
Veronica Renday.
Mrs. Renday, as you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. After you state your name and address, your two minutes will start.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Veronica Renday, I'm at eight two six East Seven Street, Bogalusa, Louisiana, seven one five two seven. I'm here tonight standing in a positive mode, wanted to let everyone know, starting September the ninth, just because Home and Wishing Hall will be opening up to tutors now, Monday through Thursday, ages five to twelve, the ages is eight two, eight to four, East Seven Street. So, most of the slots, we got five slots that's available, so we're in District B, and it's for everybody, any of the children, these will be tutors, we also do youth mentorship, so we have computer lectures, so if anybody needs help at home or for their child tutor, we have them in small seating, and you're welcome to sign up, and I just wanted to know, just that y'all know, everything is free, it is September the ninth, twenty-four through April thirty, twenty twenty-five, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Farrell, as you approach the microphone, you have two minutes, after you state your two, after you state your name and address, your two minutes will start.
Faith Farrell, nineteen thirty, want to be replaced. I'd like to thank the various staff for cleaning up Southern Drive, and all the other city state workers that worked along with them, and I also would like to talk about you councils. You all missed the last meeting, didn't nobody show up for the last meeting. Here we sitting here, high school people sitting night, and you all not showing up. It's a disgrace for you all to be councils and can't be at this big meetings on time. I am tired of you all asking for raises, and you're not doing your job, and you're asking for raises, and you don't be on time. So let's get it together and stop being late or whatever. And another thing, I hear a lot of people talking on this, talk about money and all this stuff, but what about the previous administration that gave away four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars? I don't hear nobody talk about that but the state officers. What's wrong with this system of Bogalusa, y'all scared to come back to previous administration? Let's break up the deal, stop just trying to bring forth this, this administration with the other administrations that did a whole lot worse, but you don't hear nothing about it. I think we got races going on here in Bogalusa, matter of fact, I know we do, and it's time out. I am sick of it, many of the people are sick of it, so let's get together. We have guests here tonight, they was here before tag, and you all are going to be here on tag. So let's get together, from now on, be on tag. And another thing, I'd like for the city to look at a new council, to go down on Plum Street, and watch all these folkies going there racing, they racing up down Plum Street late at night and in daytime, a lot of selling drugs. So let's get business. And another thing, I'd like to see you all get the people of this city to clean up their property. I've been asking you all to do this for years, but you can't get more and more money, but you ain't doing your job, get on it.
Well, at this time, we have administrative remarks, if y'all wish to go ahead and say anything about the going's of the city.
Sure, good evening. The city will start rental inspections October first, specifics will be available in the planning department this week, they'll also be posted on the city website. This Saturday at ten o'clock in the morning room, have the grand opening of the Team Lounge over at Cassidy Park, it's the old law cabin building, and basically, they have gaming systems, we're partnering with different local businesses on workforce development, there will be tutoring sessions available here and there for help with like the ACT, that sort of thing. So, it's a great thing, everybody says our kids have nothing to do, well, this is a free resource. They will be required to live within the city limits, they'll get an IP card, and there will be cameras, as well as a staff member of those cameras will be monitored twenty-four seven by BP. Our twenty twenty-five budget hearings have started, and are off to a great start. We look forward to presenting the balanced budget early October for a long-term passage by number fifteen. Our contracted auditors have been on site today, they're giving us a time alarm of the end of October for two thousand twenty-two. Based upon my conversations with Councilwoman Kate, she has been in touch with the Louisiana Legislature of Auditors that have let us know that once they get from car racing, even will be lifted off the non-compliance list. At that point, we will apply for an extension from twenty-three, which the auditors have suggested they would do in favor. We're still working down Southern Drive, so if you're north of the main line, don't panic yet, they're coming, and they're going down one side and coming back down another. We've received a few complaints from people saying, well, they cleaned my neighbors, they cleaned me, well, we're going up and coming back down. I'd also like to thank the city workers and the state for their efforts, you know, we plan to move this program into the residential neighborhoods, and we received a lot of flack in terms of, you know, come to the neighborhoods, why you always focus on the commercial district. Well, the main parks, the main thoroughfares of our city need to be cleaned, and we'll continue their effort. Lastly, the city is hosting a college tour on September twenty-eighth for Bogalusa seniors and juniors, so if you know any, please happen to contact our office. Thank you.
Anyone else from the administration, anybody who want to give us a public vote September or anything, I could put you on the spot. I know you're hard at it.
Hard at it. Since you mentioned that, on this four-wheeler and bike thing, in Isabel, have a place called Zona, and it's a big, hundreds of acres, just the high-speed off-roaders, everybody's everywhere, they pay up small fees, it's just going out there, and it's not that far, everybody gets up in their minds, so there is a place they can go.
Where's it located?
Okay, it's called Zona, you can look it up in Google.
Zona, Zona ATV Park.
It's Zona.
Zona, it's got about fifteen thousand Facebook followers.
It's on highway, so you can just, before you get in.
It's the only thing that need to be in it.
Thank you for out there, my honor.
Any administrative remarks, all right, this time, we're going to have council discussion, at this time, we're going to go ahead and hit the bottom end of the meeting, otherwise we'll have to wait. Councilor March, we're going to start with Councilwoman America Austin.
Good afternoon, everybody, once again, I would like to thank everybody for coming out. I would like to apologize to all the citizens on my behalf for my lateness, I am employed at the only hospital here in town, so however emergencies do come up, and I do not try to make it a tendency to be late, but I am going from one job to the next, and in between, handling any concerns that need to be addressed by the citizens, so I do apologize. Thank you to Miss Michelle Renday, I did have the opportunity, it was a pleasure to go and visit the center, very nice, very clean, everything that your kid will need for tutoring is there, so thank you so much, Miss Michelle, for that, and thank you again for the tour, and just thank you for all that you're doing for the community moving forward. Also, I just want to speak on the motorbikes and the four-wheelers, to both of the gentlemen that want to speak, I do agree with you, the kids does need something to do, it is bringing unity, and kids know how to unify together on their own merits, so we as owners do need to try to help them as well. Also, to the Bogalusa Police Department, I had the opportunity, some of the kids were out riding in the area where they're able to ride, not inside the city limits, but the trailers did break down, one of the trailers broke down, so my brother and I went to assist the kids back, and grownups that were riding making to town. Police was called, they stopped, and they were very, very kind, and they helped escort some of the kids back to their residence, I would like to thank them for that, just don't want anybody to think they're breaking the rules, going up and down, or racing, but however, it does bring unity, and as Mr. Austin stated, the kids does need something to do. Also, he's not here, but Mr. Tron, I would like to thank him, because anytime anything's going on with the bikes, I can call him, call the parents, and he's able to help the kids fix their motorbikes and four-wheelers, and he may get me for saying this, but a lot of times, he does it out of the goodness of his heart, so I would like to thank him in his absence. Once again, as the mayor stated, let's remember to support the teams, I would call it the little club for them out at Cassidy Park, they'll have positive things to do, as well as tutoring session. And let's remember, if we can, to check on our neighbors, let's remember to try to visit those that council on age not elderly, who have paved the way for us, and just thank everybody for coming out, and through all the negativity that's been posted by me, I just try to thank everybody for the positive comments and for uplifting me. And once again, I'm your councilwoman at large, my contact number is nine eight five five seven zero seven one four five, call me with any concerns that I'm making address, and I'll try to direct you to the right person. Also, to Ms. Hynes and the Water Works Department, thank y'all for being so patient and kind, I know y'all have received several calls about water bills, and they have been addressing the public very, very nicely, and patient and assisting to the best of their ability, so thank you so much, Ms. Hynes, for that, and that's all I have to say, and God bless y'all, and continue to come out, support your city, and let's try to stay on the positive note. Thank you.
This time, we have Councilwoman Gloria Case, go ahead, Councilwoman Case.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, thank you for your patience today, we did have protocol that's kind of a little bit changed up a bit, but thank you for your patience, thank you for your continued prayers, thank you for those that lost and their family. Want to say this morning, as a very key, we did start our budget hearings this morning, and they were very promising this morning, the budget hearings, we started at nine o'clock this morning, and we were pretty much meeting with each department head most of the day through three o'clock this afternoon, we were meeting on tomorrow sometimes, and as I said, it's been very promising, upon afterwards, our controllers available will finish up the actual, the actual budget for us, and then we'll start the meeting with our public, our finance hearings, our finance committee hearings as well, but everybody's been patient today, been hanging around here mostly, most of the day, but it has been promising. Also, yes, our kids, we have to continue to keep our kids in mind, keep activities in mind for our kids, we do have a pop store recreational center, but we need more for our children, and we have to, have to come together as a community in order to have more for our kids. We do have a lengthy, I'm not going to talk too long, but we're going, we do have a lengthy agenda tonight, and we're going to be describing all those, and thank you, everyone, for your attention, thank you.
Councilwoman Oleson.
I'll start by saying, if you, it's good to see everyone here, and let's go on a positive first. Um, I want to go on a positive first. I would like to thank the Bogalusa Police Department. They really worked hard this week. Um, they had two places reunions here in town and the police was there for all of them. That was also, um, my nephew, he, um, he got married this weekend and they were there to cover that. It was good to see you guys there. I appreciate that, that's to let people out of town know that they, we try and handle it on our city. We try and handle it on our part. Now to go back to talk about when I'm not here, I can't speak on no one else's. Today is September the third. This year, I have lost two brothers. And trust me, when I lose somebody in my family, my family is walking on and sitting here. I need to be grieving and not sit here grieving. That's my ask. I also lost my cousin. Yeah, I'm still grieving. I'm not coming in here when I lose somebody in my family. I'm just going to speak it. I'm not coming. So I can't speak for nobody else, but I can speak for my child. The motorbikes, let's talk about that. Where I live, they ride up and down my street. Let's check our children, our children, before we come talk about somebody else's children. These children that pass up and down my street, I know them. I went to one parent and I talked to that parent and I told her that her child is flying up and down the street on bikes here by my house. Now, another child, I know, and another one I know, which I have not spoken with the parents yet. We need to sweep around our own condo before we go try to clean up somebody else's. I understand we need to work together, but don't come talk about what somebody else's child doing until you ready and truly know what your child is. Think about it, when you were a kid, what did you do when your parents weren't around? You did everything under the sun that you can think of when your parents were talking. So right now, today, these kids are doing the same. I'm old school, I live up there. I have no problem with telling your child, they don't need to be flying up and down the street. I have no problem coming to you to tell you, I saw your child flying up and down the street and I'm asking you to ask your child to be careful. Because where I live at, I'm the second house on the block, there's a stop sign. And do they stop for that stop sign? No. The crossing street doesn't have a stop sign and these kids will keep going. I don't want to be standing here crying over your child on the, you on the phone, saying, look, you need to get up here. This doesn't happen. I have no problem with talking with you about your child. I have a problem with you wanting to tell somebody else's child and your child is involved in the same incident.
Okay, Councilman Waters, Councilwoman Gray, where are your other council sessions?
Right, I've been, I've been, uh.
Let me turn on my, please.
Just two things, uh, number one, I apologize again, lately, I don't apologize for being late. My daughter, um, shipped out for the military today, so I don't even know also. The second thing I want to say to, uh, I want to ask the administration to, uh, definitely reconsider, um, the sports group, uh, for soccer league. Hey, but I can't even sign up to play. And, uh, I know that the park, um, has been used recently for other things. And I just want to ask, anyway, if they are willing to work with this group so that, uh, children won't suffer. Eighty-five kids, a lot of kids, a lot of them kids, um, just in our social, I don't look like me. And I, I'm amazing to, to even play a sport that, you know, I never imagined that I would even think about watching or playing in the period. So I was going to reconsider, uh, so these kids don't lose the season and have a good place to play and figure out a way to make it work with them. That's all I have.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I want to tell you in the month of, between August first and today, that for you, the citizens of Bogalusa and not in my district, but also some other council people too, uh, reclaim just my work orders along that I put into the computer system between, uh, helping this, um, Tamara, Councilwoman Tamara, and also some other council people. Uh, this doesn't include councilman cases. I done thirty, put in thirty-two work orders to be, uh, work order requests. Now you can call Public Works and put in a work order request. I'm going to reach my call for a work order request. You're asking work to be done. It's not going to be done immediately. It's hot, we're shorthanded. Uh, I understand these factors. It is nothing, and don't blame the mayor. It's been like that for twenty-five years. So please work with us, please be patient with us. They are the pothole fillers. I went out and shook their hands and thanked them, uh, this past week. Uh, and they were, they had some questions about where some potholes were. I write these potholes up all the time. And as I moved out of my district, I looked in other people's district and they not have those or whatever, and asked them if they have, have help. I also reported ten street lights. Uh, remember guys, pick up the phone. You don't have to wait on your city council, you don't have to call the city. If there's a street light in front of your house, please call Angie, one eight hundred nine outreach and report it. Get it done, report the address. We pay twenty, over twenty-seven thousand dollars a month to keep the street lights going, whether they're working or not. If you look down, uh, so if you don't look down Louisiana Avenue, there's only one or two street lights now, starting at Restaurant Grove all the way to, uh, Lake Vista. I personally wrapped almost forty street lights to get those back and done. Those are not part of my council circuit. I'm not looking to run for mayor. I'm not looking for anything. I just done for the citizens. That's not even part of my district. I just want to make the city look prettier. It looks a lot prettier when there's a street light coming, you come back to the town. And also you might have, that street light might save your life when you're turning a car, turning around or whatever. Where, no matter where you are. And I would see all the street lights up and going, call me in, one eight hundred nine outreach. Don't wait on your councilperson. Uh, so moving along, uh, one, keep in mind that we did work very hard. We're going to vote and be done. And yes, I'm aware of the last council meeting being delayed, uh, and everything. Uh, but, and I don't blame, uh, any particular person. I was doing what the charter, a- as the charter stated, the mayor was out of town. Uh, and the charter does kick in and like the president of the council, the acting mayor, until the mayor comes back. The mayor didn't come back that, that meeting. Plus we had another councilperson that had a health crisis, which wouldn't have helped me, what needed direction. So the thing is that, uh, conducting the city's business, yes, is important to us. And you saw what I've done tonight. We've been over backwards and worked with the city attorney. I won't thank you too, but I worked with the city attorney so we can have a council meeting tonight instead of calling it. So at this time, I want to also read a letter so we can clear up some clarity tonight. Uh, actually, we're going to switch over to Council Secretary, remember Ford, she's going to read the letter. This is from.
Good evening, councilmembers, citizens of Bogalusa, citizens of District D. I want to take this opportunity to give information to all. July twenty twenty-four, I have been diagnosed with stage four adenocarcinoma, which is non-healing but treatable, that calls me to resign as council president. I recently started treatments to fight this devil sickness. I may be forced to miss a meeting or so along the way. None of this. If it comes down to me not being able to physically and mentally perform my duties, that which I was elected, then I'm waiting while I resign my position as councilman. Thank you all for understanding. Thank you all for your kind thoughts and prayers. I remain Kenny Kelly's Bogalusa, Councilman District D.
And with that being said, let's remember to keep Mr. Kenny and his family, um, in prayer this time as well as Ms. Shepherd. And congratulations to you, um, Pastor Greve, and to your family. And wish them you do nothing but the best and tell them nothing but the best. And make sure you tell your daughter, good job.
Apologize, it's technical, it shouldn't have worked out. All right, this time I'd like to notify everyone in the room and internally, that we now have a form, a five-day form, as required by, uh, city ordinance and state law. We can now conduct our council meeting, uh, at the time of internally, um, six twenty-seven PM. Please note, we do have a form. I'd like to call to the board of the Bogalusa City Council, regular business meeting. This is to discuss all, uh, uh, public hearings and, uh, public hearings and everything. All right. Uh, we're going to skip, we have done have, uh, uh, pledge allegiance and invitation earlier. We're going to skip to, uh, this time we'll have roll call again for the business portion. Uh-oh, we've got something going on. I'm sorry. We're going to halt the meeting for just a moment. We apologize to the public. Just a moment, okay? We'll see what, uh, we did find out what's going on. Once again, we apologize. Once again, we apologize. We ask the public to be patient with us as we maintain the form as required by city charter and city law. We've been coming forward this time. We are reconvening and next again this evening. All right, now moving along with agenda. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kent.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Grady.
Here.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Campbell is at President Urban.
Here.
Councilwoman Depp.
Next, we have approval of the minutes held on July 2nd, 2024 and August 6th, 2024.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kent.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Grady.
Aye.
President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Depp.
Aye.
Next, we have, we don't have any recognition awards. We don't have any adoption or resolutions. Next, we have an introduction, introduction of ordinances. The first ordinance will be, this is introduction only, will be out of the public vote September 17th. Councilwoman Depp, please.
An ordinance establishing park fees and regulations for the City of Bogalusa Parks and Recreation Department. Okay, this will be discussing at the next council meeting and it's a reference to our fees, to our parks and recreational department.
Okay, next, we have a ordinance, an ordinance establishing fees and regulations for parades within the city limits of the City of Bogalusa. This will be out for public vote September 17th. This is the parades within the city limits of, will be discussing the fees and regulations at next council meeting. Next, we have alcohol handwriting this one for Councilwoman Temples. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Bogalusa to enter an agreement with high free protocols to render online tax collections and tax sale, tax sale services to the City of Bogalusa that will also be out for public vote, public discussion September 17th. The next one is by me. We're not going to do this as emergency ordinance. It's going to be done as a regular ordinance, so everybody will be. Okay, skilled one. Sorry, oh, Councilwoman Depp, please.
An ordinance authorizing a contracted Gotham Professional Consulting LLC to provide engagement contract for the City of Bogalusa at the attached contract dated August 10th, 2024. This will be discussed at our next council meeting. Gotham LLC, come over here and they would be, they have, they responded back to the legislative auditor during our, our legislative auditor's administrative questioning. So we'll discuss this further at our next council meeting.
Okay, the next one is our, and the request of our city attorney, Mr. Kelvin, Kelvin Beck, has requested me to do the next, next one as a regular ordinance and it will be up for discussion September 17th. This is a ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Bogalusa to enter into an agreement with EAG Gulf Coast LLC, which is not his name, to render financial statement for the 2022 closeout to the independent auditor Carl Riz and Ingram LLC. This will be up for discussion at our September 17th city council meeting. Next, we're moving over to public, public hearings and adoption of ordinances. This is our public hearings part. Councilman O'Grady.
Argent supplement and amended ordinance number 1685, ordinance number 1064, and ordinance number 1416 regarding compensation of city council members who keep the provision of the city charter not man effected during these statements.
Okay, as you heard, now do I have a, do I have a motion on that?
No motion.
Okay, if I have a second, I have a motion and a second. Public discussion on this, on the one that was just read. If anyone has public discussion on this, but getting compensation to the place and before we start, before we start, so we clarity, this will not take place until January 1st, 2027 under city charter. Okay, January 1st, 2027 is when it takes place. We have, please state your name and address to the record. We have two minutes, I mean, excuse me, three minutes to discuss the business items.
Okay, I'm Denver, Colorado, 764 Marshall Street, Dillon Road. And I just wanted to say that I am in agreement for everyone getting the raise. I know it won't be till next people, but I know y'all look hard and deserve it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Gray, please state your, my phone, please state your name and address.
One ten, one five. All this ordinance regarding the pay increase for the council, I agree 100%. I know there's some members who might be hesitant to do it because they think, well, I don't give a hell if I do that. But think of your, not only yourself and this present council, but you may follow your footsteps. It's six hundred thousand a month for payments that do not even cover your expenses that you build up every month serving on this city council. It doesn't cover it. And then you have to check a day on work and you're just out home that much. So I do encourage you to think about not only yourself, but others too and the future council. It's not an easy thing to do, it's not much of a raise, but it will help. I don't even think it will entice all people in the room because I like to think of it for the cause of what they go and receive, but it will help with some of the expenses. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, please state your name and address to the record. You have two minutes, three minutes.
Okay, my name is Ubeke Preston, 641 St. Augustine Street, Bogalusa. Now, when we first saw this, it was back on August 1st about this introduction. And when y'all put this introduction together, you use data from June of 1999, which is comparable to even this day and time. It should be even reintroduced because the people you have listed on here have been on this council for years. We need to know when you're asking for a raise, there needs to be God. Are you going to job? Some, yes, some, no. And I do agree that the council may need a raise, but not this time. We just got over with state legislator. We just got over a spending freeze. We just got over trying to get the budget approved, but y'all don't have a raise. A raise is warranted. In government, we get raises, we get bonuses, we get promotions, but there are certain guidelines you have to meet to get there. Now, if we're in a struggle over finances, freezing, state legislator and things of that nature, is this really the term to ask for a raise? I think we need to get the city back on track first and let's get that going. Let's get our budget straight for it first before we start obligating ourselves to a raise and to new people coming in that we don't even know who they can do job for their first term in administration in 2025. So I'm not agreeing with the raise at this time. This city has a lot of problems we need to address and get it back on track from the last administration. We need to keep track on getting these budgets approved. And then when those things are done, let's consider introducing a raise.
Councilwoman Depp. Thank you, Ubeke. Senator O'Grady.
My name is Evan Thompson. Sorry.
Key's Mary, 925 East Fourth Street, Department 70. Now, I think this raise thing, talking about compensation, I think you all need to do away with that and allow the next administration to bring it up.
Yeah.
Because at that time, we might have, you know, seven new people.
Yeah.
So we need to let, let them decide on this raise stuff. So, and some of y'all might, might be back on the council, but I would say let's take this for right now because the cities are not need a money. And we don't need to be compensated for people that's being compensated right now and not even doing their job.
And on time.
Yes, not on time, not working for us, working for someone else. So you don't need to be compensated. If you're not doing job, you don't need the money to get enough. What, why they do that on their politics? When people want to get paid and do, when they get paid, how they get paid and don't do nothing on their politics? That don't work in the real world. So we need to just leave this mess alone and just allow the next city council to bring it up. At that time, then we'll come back and be busy.
All right, thank you. Now, keep in mind, once again, I said January 1st, 2027. So by city charter, it won't be until the next administration, once they take office, it will be 2031 before they will be the race. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for 2031 to be with us. We need to think about the problems we have now. The cities are in the red. And I'm going to tell you all, the mayor paid that four thousand dollars that you all should have voted on to pay that bill. You didn't do that, but you all have a bill, y'all voted to pay y'all bill. I think you all did it unfair. When you get up here and say equal justice for all, I can't see it. I can't tell. So my thing is, let's get real and get right. If you're not going to do equal justice for all, don't say it. Don't even get up here and say it at all. Because I'm just sitting tired and hearing y'all say equal justice when I know it's going to justice here. And until you all pay that four thousand dollars that he paid out of his pocket, I would not ever go along and give him no raise for nobody. No one. So let's go and think about, we are in 2027, hold up a year if you say, don't even think about that. Let's go ahead and try to keep these bills we got now and pay it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Next. All right, so we're going to have two minutes after you state your name and address to the record. How many, three minutes?
Donna Sullis, 622 Union Avenue. Just for you to go to the fact in 2027.
That's correct.
Well, I think they might go to court because it'd be a deep, you know, it'd be an escalation, so maybe if I leave the city being in a lot better standing than y'all being in a poor neighborhood.
Boris House, 1127 Avenue, J.
On the record, you should pass it. They need to be compensated for city seats. They not going to get the money. If y'all go out and do y'all job and we get the council people who going to take care of Bogalusa, they the ones going to get the money. And if you go to court and you lose, you should win some, win some better representation. When you go to court and lose, that means you was wrong. The city should be paying for that. Let the person who represent them pay for it. How about that? It should be paid. These people who sit up here, take their time out to do, Bogalusa bigs need to be compensated for that. You looking at these people up here, these people might not even be there by 2027. If you do, if you're looking toward the future, then you should look for some better candidates if they not willing to be there. But whoever sit there need to be compensated. Ain't nothing wrong with that. The cost of living is going up for all of us.
I do not agree with you.
You don't have to. You don't have to. You just like they say, nobody broke up with the previous administration spent the 465 dollars. Did I not say that at the last council meeting, council people? Did I not say what the previous administration spent and this administration spent illegally? I think I need, you pay attention to what you're going to pay attention to. It's a good old system going on and you loving that. Don't do it. Hey, Bogalusa need to be mature. We don't need these same old people who they were leading our, our community and going to lay Bogalusa down a sinkhole. And they still coming in here today like they blowing something up the city. Call people out when they wrong. That's the only way Bogalusa get right. You ain't be on this side or that side, you gotta build it up. If you can't see fault in nothing that I does do except for this person, what good is you? You cannot be like that. It should be passed. It should be voted off, but just like I said, if they not doing their job, vote not. They don't even get it. Simple. Whoever sit there need to be compensated. You go to work, you want to get paid. It's not a period. The right way. Things are going up in the world. Nobody wants to be there for nothing. At least show the people that grant to, get a raise, that's, that's nothing. That's nothing. That's half of the city. You gonna get council members who going to show up. Ain't nothing you don't fuck. Vote those people, you don't like what they do? Vote them not and whoever come in will get the raise. Simple.
All right, before the next person comes, any other public discussion? Anybody else with the public wish to speak? Please come over.
Uh, Key Mary, 925 East Fourth Street, Department 70. I'd like to thank the mayor for making sure, y'all probably saw on Facebook, he's making sure that these landlords' properties are up to par. Because you know, a lot of landlords trying to take advantage of people. So I thank the mayor for that. You know, sometimes people they like to try to use their authority to lower over people. But there's someone that's higher than them that they have to answer to. And I'm not just talking about the mayor, you'll catch that tomorrow. But I'd like to thank you for that and I would like to thank Mr. Patterson for making sure that Warren Street.
Let's, hey, let's stick to the subject we done had public participation.
Okay, well, thank you.
Let's stick to the subject of discussing council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patterson, for making sure that Warren Street got fixed. And thank you, oh, man, for making sure that these landlords keep their property up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Earl. What we're discussing here is council raises. We're going from $600 that was voted in in 1997 to $800 that they will be getting in 2027. We're not getting that today. Thank you, sir. Sir, please state your name and address to the record.
Scott Bullen, 60322 Beach Orchard, Bogalusa. I totally agree that this should be voted on and done. Most people do not understand the work and the extra stuff that goes on. You see what they do. You don't hit the phone calls when tomorrow or Mr. O'Grady are answering and helping get some of these things on the agenda. And I mean, there's a lot of things going on on the scene. These people put blood, sweat, tears in. A $200 raise for, you know, they, they have no, I didn't even know hours and stuff gets put into this stuff. As being a business owner and people that run, do these kind of things, you have no idea how much amount of extra stuff that everybody has to do. And that's where we're at, I'd say on it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak or, or assist in our competition? If they're not, we're going to move to council discussion. I'm going to go first and go with. First of all, let me discuss, I repeatedly said this over and over again, the next council will get the raises, okay? The next council get the raises. If you factor in, there's a thing called inflation. Since 2020 till now, inflation has went up 21%. During that time, no council person and no action, no mayor got any raise I'm aware of, okay? I'm talking about voted on by the council. From 1997 till today, if you factor in inflation, we should have asked for $1,166 tonight, okay? We should have asked for that. That's just keeping up with inflation. But we didn't go and come up here to ask for that. Did you know we do not have computers? We don't have iPads, nothing to write work orders on, that's our own. We have to go buy our own equipment, our own ink, our own paper, doing several, several, several. And our department back there is cut to the bone, okay? Because we're trying to cut expenses and not raise taxpayer money, okay? So we have all our own equipment back there. There is no frivolous spending of the city council going on on our particular department because there's nothing to, to spend. Well, in my mind, we don't have a tribal budget at the current time, but we will get reimbursed if we go to what else we might. We would love to go over to Baton Rouge when they asked us to come before the finance meeting to know we're going to get reimbursed, at least asked. But guys, I'm going to tell you something, I had a senator got on me, I'm not going, I'm not going to say something. Say what the situation was, she was saying, what does the council want? And so I would love to be in there, but I had to put my mother up in the hotel room. She has Parkinson's, I'll go ahead and tell you that. Everybody knows on Facebook, everybody knows that. I'm going to tell, she, she wants everybody to know. I take care of her in the mornings. I do that and two other jobs along with the other council people up here. This is part, part time, me and Councilwoman Depp, Councilwoman Depp has been up here almost all day. She's very tired right now. Y'all saw it, it's extremely tired. We come up here, she's the director of finance meeting, I make sure we have a finance meeting. And I was up here for the economic meeting, we don't get paid nothing for that. Nothing. But we wrote all these extra work orders for y'all and everything else because we love our hearts and want to continue to do so, even if it's a little bit dangerous because you look like it's us being council people. We love to work with the City of Bogalusa. And the mayor, I would tell you, his commitment in the last several weeks, he made a commitment to work with us. And we're, we're playing ball with even the city currently. So we love that, okay? We're one of the varsity holder. So I'm not going to come up here. I probably want to be, I probably want to be up there, that's why I'm saying next council, next council election. God may have me somewhere else. I may be in another position, I may be in, and I may be on the government. And I want to tell you something, there going to be a few people, I might watch them tonight. There's a few people in the state that's going to be probably running without, run it out real quick and resign. When I become governor. When I become governor. Uh, believe it or not, I told my mom before, uh, I actually contemplated about becoming governor. So during this previous election, when they got off the crowd, we quit. We're gonna move on though, to other council discussions, because I know other council people want to discuss this. But I'm just telling you, I just laid it out to y'all. This is asking for $200 and guess what? That's three years from now. So, or two years or whatever from now. All right, next.
Council discussion.
Council discussion.
Okay, I want to say this. A lot of you sit here and you feel like we just do our jobs. Our phones ring 24/7. Mine rings 24/7. On Sunday morning, when I should be sitting in church trying to get ready to go to church, well, I'm calling a city employee trying to handle this situation for someone else. And y'all sitting here and say, we don't do our jobs. Only thing you see is, we are here at this table. You don't know what we do when we walk out there. If I leave and I get home and Ms. Jones calling and say she have this problem, what am I doing? I'm going to take care of Ms. Jones' problem. I thank the Lord for having some of city workers' phone number where I can call to say, uh, Kenny, I'm here. This is going on. Yeah, they get paid overtime for coming out after hours to do what needs to be done. This is not saying I'm gonna be sitting in this seat when, uh, uh, this raise come through. But I've been on here for, I'm on 10 years. And when I come here, long before I came here, they will still be getting that same $600. $600 used to pay for gas when I first got started. Now they don't pay for gas, even though I would switch feet here, because well, they don't pay for gas. But the thing, we do our jobs. If somebody call me, I have to call one of these other people here, I have to call the city employees. We have a 24/7 job. Some of you don't understand what we do. Our jobs are 24/7. My phone have to speak with me because if Ms. Jones has a problem and she call me, I need to be here to answer my phone. I'm not gonna sit here and say, you know what, that's Ms. Jones I called up. I can't do that. And anyone you, if you call me and tell me you have a problem, I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna be there. Sometimes, I know this is not my job, but you know, when things happen, we have the police department here, we know that all the employees, uh, uh, all the, uh, different departments here are short staffed. So if I see where I can get by, I get by. Which that's not my job that I'm getting paid for, but I do, I get by. So I mean, like Mark just said, $200, that's not all I. And I think I need to be here in this chair. Whatever.
I do have a council discussion. Uh, this is my third term. And I've always worked as hard as I can, no matter what the comments are on me, I still work hard. Now, I did take the liberty to pull 2015 up to term date, anyone welcome to come and see the auditors that we have passed. A lot of people think, well, uh, you have passed, you have, uh, negative, you didn't pass, you're not in favor. Our voting record speaks for itself. And anyone, anyone, I promise you, that wants to come and view these auditors, you're, you're welcome to. Also, I would like to say, and, and you know what? And I said I was gonna vote against it. You know, but, but after being here today, my husband said, and I stand my husband as you do it. But I want to read to you, we have, see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different committees that we are all assigned to. My three committees is Finance Committee, the B A Committee, as well as the Economic Development Committee. And as, uh, Councilman Mark Erving just said, we have these meetings, they're posted, they're open to the public to come. You know, we don't get paid, look, didn't ask for anything for it. Why do we do it? Because we love constituents. We love the city, we wanna see this city thrive. We have work orders with, with energy. Right, work orders, lights are out. We do that on a, on a, on a day-to-day basis. And yes, it's done, the, the, the particular, uh, pay will not be until 2027. But interview that, that wants to apply or, 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 or want to, uh, to be in a position for 2027, that's, that's all well done. But we're trying to make a way for those that are coming, that I may be in this position, I may not. And then we also, we also do, uh, it's a number of, uh, issues that, that we might try to, uh, try to tell as, as, uh, try to accomplish as council people. From, as I said, from energy, contacting our, our public, uh, uh, commissioner on issues, planning and zoning, we try to work with our planning and zoning. So it's just, you know, it's just a lot that we do, a lot that we love to do and like to continue to do. And my, my, my particular, uh, and surely everyone else as well, not only do we help in our district, we go out, throughout the, throughout the city. As Councilwoman Douglas said, we help out what we can help out. So that's, that's all I have to say on that. Uh, had been a raise since, uh, 1997. And that's $250 every two weeks. It's not over $230, two, I tell you, I have my, $250 every two weeks that, that we will make, that we do make. And that is as a, uh, a leadway, uh, for us. We don't, we don't mind doing it, but without, we're thinking, I'm not sure how the voters let it go. But we're thinking, it may be, it just, it just may be time. Thank you.
Let's not forget, the council also volunteers in the springtime. And thank to the hospital and the parish for organizing that cleanup on 23 people that sit home in our city, shows around. But I only tell you, it's 10 people. Remember that one. Moving on. I'm calling it's here.
And I would just like to say, um, one more. And our checks are not deposited like everybody else. We come here every week to get out of $250. It's not deposited like the rest of us in counties. So you know we love it.
Hey, excuse me one second, one second, amen, amen, so disrespectful.
My people is talking, they been in the last week.
I apologize.
Don't apologize, you better.
I don't know how you can see me. I said, I, I'm, I'm just, yeah, but she's talking, everybody up here talking, everybody talking, she's the talking, that is so rude, disrespectful. And I don't understand how you even feel part of doing it. That's why, I apologize, I will never do it to you again. But please, let me come and talk, you're so rude.
This is for business, you, I'm not your baby.
So act like it.
I'm your wife, it's your baby. I have a name.
I, I don't know your name.
And that sex, sex and massage business. And I'm asking for EDOs, you just mad?
When I raised this position because of course, I like, I like my city, I love my city and I love what I do, so it's not about the money. And I'm on, I'm gonna speak for myself and everyone that sits here, as well as our mayor, our, our former mayor, now Mr. Tapper. And we all deserve a raise, including him. Because it doesn't matter if I call my councilmates on Sunday through Sunday or the mayor, Sunday through Sunday. We all try to help out for the betterment of this city. So yes, this raise will take effect hopefully in 2027, but we all deserve it now. And, um, you can, you can say what you wanna say, I think what you wanna say. When people get up here and disrespect the rules and the president and talk about other things that does not pertain to the agenda, you gotta come harder to try to embarrass me. So I'm gonna be the elephant in the room and this is off the subject because I definitely don't mind. But keep in mind, when you try to come up with secret, throw daggers for me, I never once said I would give anybody landlord or landlord, but yes, I do own the property. You as a minister, Mr. Keep, you are, you are understanding. When the Lord has blessed you to be a blessing to others, that's my job, it's a mission to help people. So you can sit over there and play and act like you're foolish, that's the term I'm going to use for you. That's okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet you out of mind. Out of mind, you brought it here, I'm gonna take it there. However, as a missionary, I don't mind helping anyone, so that's not, that's not play games, because if I was the president, Mark, some of these would have been out of here. Uh, police officer, excuse this, this and that, because that way we're gonna control the environment and we're here for business, which I would let me by free will to do. This is a place for business. You have my number, you call me for other things, so you can call me, you don't have to come up here and play a game. We're here to conduct business. This is a council meeting, we're conducting business. All the nays and hays and criticisms, keep that for when we get out the door or call us on the phone. I'm always trying to read my numbers. If I don't, if you call, I don't ask if you're back in the family member, I will call you back. All I'm saying is, this is not the time or the place for foolishness. And I think everybody in this room is wrong. We need to act accordingly to our age and not to our disability.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna reiterate, please go back and forth. The next time it happens, I will, you'll be escorted out of the council, okay? Moving along. Secretary Ford, do we have a regular call on this particular agenda?
Secretary Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Bree?
Aye.
Secretary Hargan?
Aye.
Councilwoman, that is.
Aye.
Thank you. Much obliged. The next one, uh, I need to give some clarity before I take action. On this, uh, Councilwoman Douglas asked me to read the ordinance, so I'm gonna read it. An ordinance establishing fees and regulations for the city of Boths Parks and Recreation Department. It was planned on being, uh, up for vote tonight, but we did find some technical problems with the wording in it. And, uh, it had to be split into two ordinances. Uh, that's where we introduced the ordinance, to be fair to the people that are petitioning it, to be fair to the petitioners, uh, in the administration that was petitioning this ordinance to the council and to the public. Uh, we split it into two, which will be voted on in the next council meeting. So there will be a Parks and Recreation fee schedule per ordinance and a Parks fee schedule per ordinance. That's gonna be in the next, it will be voted on, uh, the, excuse me, the Parks, excuse me, Parks fee schedule and the parade fee schedule will be voted on in the next council meeting separately. So they will be voted on two different ordinances, okay? So tonight, I'm gonna ask for information. We agreed to pass this, strike the parade language and bring the parade up at the next council meeting. Okay. Uh, we're going to actually pull this, Mayor, we've done that for the term, you explained everything. It does for proposals put together in, in the wrong way. And part, you had, uh, someone put the parades and the parks fees under the same ordinance and they had to be split completely. And that's what we're figuring with. The, the fees did not change, the fees are not changing. It's just gonna split to new, to new ordinances. And we promptly introduced at our next council meeting. It's been introduced tonight, and we're introduced tonight and voted on September 17th. That's, that's what we have in the term of making of discussions. We, actually, we had discussed.
We already brought up that concern in the last meeting, and the answer, if I'm, if I'm a call, because the Boths Park was there, Parks and Recreation Development, it all came to the same conclusion. Strike anything relevant with parades. All that takes is a council person to motion to amend, motion to remove parade language. We were keeping the, the block party blocking the streets. And we were bringing the parade ordinance by itself at the next meeting. That's what we discussed.
Okay?
Uh, I did a comment, uh, when we met with the, uh, with the, uh, Police Department and we met with, uh, Constable Ray, Mr. Bondo and Mr. Chris, that, uh, we found that, as you indicated, the language was intertwined with the Parks and Recreation and the, uh, the Parks and Recreation as well as the, yeah, the Police Department. So we had to go and, and, uh, I spoke with, uh, Police Department Officer Trevor on it to make sure that information was, uh, uh, recited out and the, uh, the Parks and Recreation was recited out as well. And what I understand, because it was all intertwined, we were going to, we were going to, uh, pull it and, uh, I was impressed, we're gonna reintroduce both individual voices, Parks and Recreation and, uh, and Police Department.
So, the only thing that mentions parades on the park fee schedule was literally the street that says parades, 500 per mile.
Exactly.
But the ordinance that the Police Department offered, they handled all of that, which is why we said we were gonna strike this and pass it.
Yes, we did, we did, uh, separate that with the, uh, a talk to Mr. Bondo and that was separated, that last paragraph for the event, uh, fees for Parks and Recreation, that's the reason.
Right, so again, our original point still stands. All we have to do is motion to strike the parade language. And you have a fee schedule for Parks and Recreation. Right now, it's a busy time. The weather is cooling off. The Parks and Recreation Department can tell you, I'm having people come in and request a permanent payment. They, they have stats, no purpose, if they can show that we are in the only city around here that does not charge to use our parks. We're not asking for a lot, but homecoming is coming up. All these different organizations, groups, classes, they are reserved in public facilities. Technically, with our conversation with the auditors, if we're, if we're cutting on lights at a park and not charging for a nominal fee, which is what they call it, then we're technically donating public property, which we were just citing for. All we have to do is strike the parade language. And you have a full fee and a big schedule for the parks. We also want a conclusion to this soccer situation. And the fees are here. He brings his fees, they gonna be able to use the sports place. That's the power of it.
The city has operating money to turn on the lights. We already have operating money and bonds and sets pure to operate our Parks and Recreation Department. So yes, that, that now, don't get me wrong, Mayor, but these ordinances had to be separated off of our clarity purposes only. We were trying to be fair to the public and clear up some misunderstanding amongst the ordinances themselves. That's why they're, they're being done that way. So this, this ordinance that was presented, after we reviewed it, it went back and forth. It's like ping pong, you have parades over here and then parks over here. And it got all intertwined.
That's the ordinance that you all are supposed to run next time. This ordinance is one page, one page. All you have to do is strike one line. What am I not saying that's hitting the polls? Strike. Strike parades, you have a fee schedule, that's all I'm saying. There's no reason to keep waiting. Keep kicking a can down the road, down the road, and then next time, we'll give another excuse. Get it done.
Alright, Attorney Mike, we legally do that.
Yes.
Okay, so you're in agreement with that? Okay, to strike this, what we're gonna do is strike the, uh, parks and parades. And I'm striking the parades, okay? We have never heard of this in our official orders, yeah, okay? That's why I'm bringing that, I'm asking you, as a attorney, okay? I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to start nothing with them, you do know, understand, while we separate it and introduce it, right? Okay. Alright, for clarity, for clarity purposes. Because I just wanna put up here every time the council looks like a butt on TV, okay? I'm, I'm just clarity for you and we'll be back tonight. Okay, what we're going to do is tonight, we're going to, we're gonna have to go amendments to amend the, this particular agenda and vote on it to strike the parades out of here. And then the parades will run as its own, because it's already introduced at the next council meeting on September seventeenth. Alright, so we all back on? Alright, now, just moving along, we now have to make a motion to amend. I'm gonna reread it, I'm gonna make, make a motion to, to amend this ordinance. Uh, amend, motion to amend the establishing fees and regulation for the City of Bublous, Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, the part that we're going to amend, that we are removing all language for parades, uh, from this ordinance. I'm making a motion to remove all, all language for parades. That will be voted on, on September seventeenth by the, uh, by the ordinance that was dubbed, that we introduced tonight, the parades, okay? That's what our, that's an instruction I have received from our city attorney.
About the ordinance that was read in the last meeting.
Right, it's been, it's up for public discussion tonight. So we're gonna make an amendment on that to remove all language for parades. And that will be coming up for September seventeen.
So.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Kay.
I make a motion that we, uh, move.
Remove language for parades.
Move, remove language for parades, which we've done already, and, uh, just vote on it on September seventeenth.
Alright, September seventeenth.
September seventeenth. That's the next one, please.
Because it's already introduced earlier, alright? Alright, now. Uh, second. I know, well, actually, yeah, I don't know the sound of the word, but we're not going to actually.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yeah.
Well, we have sessions.
On the amendment, on the amendment, the agenda?
No, um.
Councilwoman Smith.
And this is for all the parks, for, um, with no exceptions to anyone, correct? If they need to use the park, they will have a permit to pay.
Alright, then, we're just voting on the amendment, we're not voting on the actual ordinance yet.
But I still have clarification.
We're voting on the amendment to strike out all the parade information.
Thank you, my sweetie.
And, and not only the park fees will be discussed in just a moment, by the public.
Okay, I follow.
Aye. Councilwoman Kay. Councilwoman Agnew. Secretary Harkin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Depp.
Aye.
Okay, Mr.. I want to have, want to discuss it.
We're discussing this one.
So, um, we're in public discussion, uh, this is Mr. Chris Zensky. And please state your position and also your address for the record. And you're gonna have to give him three minutes to discuss anything with this.
Uh, don't use we do, just the back and forth with the administration.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Christopher Zensky, Director of Community Development, sixteen thirty-two, H. B.
Arrow. Everyone, I'm Johnny, six four one three two, OC Monroe, Anthony Deanan.
Alright, so just wanted to give you guys a, a little bit of context here on the City of Bublous event fee schedule. This ordinance was introduced as a response to what the administration has been hearing, uh, for the past almost two years, especially Parks and Recreation Development. Largely, what we're hearing is citizens want upgrades to the city's properties, namely the sports complexes. Uh, parents are always asking for field upgrades, better concessions, uh, more amenities and whatnot. These things are not cheap. Uh, as we discussed with you guys separately, infield rehab is sixty thousand dollars per field. Whole baseball fields cost two hundred and thou, two hundred thousand dollars to, um, rehab and have over ten in the city. Uh, chalk for baseball can go upwards of five hundred thousand dollars a season, bases five hundred to a thousand. Um, field one has no shade system, parents would like shade and our vulnerable populations need that. That would be ten thousand per side. Uh, umpires exceed five thousand dollars a season to install, uh, safety grade rubber or wood chips at parks, twenty thousand dollars per playground, you know, we have one that, Casy Park that really needs it. The light bill per year for parking rate is seventy thousand dollars. Uh, so we introduced these minimal fees to offset these costs. Fees as a whole are below comparable cities, Pick U, eleven thousand in population. They charge twenty-five dollars just used to have a key fob for the restaurants. They charge to use the restaurants. McComb, twelve thousand four hundred and ten citizens, they charge a couple hundred dollars. Hammond, nineteen thousand, they charge. Frankton charges, Frankton with less than four thousand people just tried to charge eight hundred dollars for one field for a softball tournament. We're not asking for any more than this. Pacha Tula, seven thousand people, they rent five baseball fields, six football fields, five gymnasiums, four softball fields, four tee ball fields and two conference halls. Poplarville, two thousand people, thirty-five dollars to rent a pavilion. Long Beach, Mississippi, sixteen thousand people, you have to pay there. You actually have to pay almost a hundred dollars to rent their soccer complex for one field. Covington, eleven thousand people, their tournament's a four hundred, a four hundred dollar deposit practice. It's twenty-five dollars a field for one and a half hours. So we think this fee schedule is, it fails in comparison to what everybody else is charging. But I think we need to give it the time and, uh, charge something, that way we can have, uh, the parks that everyone wants.
Like Mr. Christopher said, we have to start somewhere. For instance, I play softball in Sunday. Uh, a softball team in Frankton, they tried to rent one park, one field, eight hundred dollars for one day. We asking for fifty dollars a day. That's with lights and everything included. They tried to charge eight hundred dollars just for a park, that's not including concession stands and nothing. I have another team I play down in McComb, they charge twenty-five dollars per field, per game. We asking for fifty dollars a day. We got, we have to start somewhere in order to get our city, get our facilities to where they, where we can envision them ever to be. Because as of now, they're years behind. We have infield that's overgrown with grass, we don't have the money to fix, the concession stands way behind, the bathrooms, we don't have the accessories we need in order to keep open the parks and, and just simple things like that. But also, I just feel like we have to start somewhere in order to get to where we're trying to go, right?
I wanna, I wanna ask you all, was the end of research, um, see what sports organizations play? Do sports organizations get any form of discount, any form of cost, or they pay like, or whatever?
So allowing, allowing them to, um, have a discount or rate or pay anything other than what, uh, is listed will give donation of public funds, so we can allow.
Per to y'all coming up with these prices, um, what would the city prices prior to?
The city has charged previously, um, we have no record of those ever being logged, um, and it's never been on books, so technically, we're not allowed to charge.
Okay, so that's my, that's my point.
To get context today, when we first got here, they were coming in and paying twenty-five dollars, but it wasn't on the books, so we refused to take it. Also, um, many of our players had told me in the past, we need. The park, the ballpark, it happened to be, Mr. Timms would charge us a hundred and thirty dollars to come out and turn on the lights. None of those fees were on the books, so people were being charged to use the parks. So charging for park fees is not some new concept, we just wanna put it on the books.
Thank you, my funny thing. So, um, previously, prior to, there, there wasn't any fees other than the twenty-five dollar fee that wasn't probably, um, being recorded correctly, the city was able to maintain. However, I do know that persons, we do like those for free, I for one. Um, the city was able to manage, but I never had anyone to come up to the council meeting, um, during my terms of service to say that the parks need to be upgraded, that I got under debt, the splash pad, something maybe going on that the city had to be responsible for. So I just like to say with these things for the record, so that citizens, myself, when those are our tax dollars are going and where money is being spent. Um, but we do have to collect amount of money. Um, some of these prices are kind of sort of high, from going from having to pay anything or just paying twenty-five dollars to bam, seven hundred fifty dollars. So, um, just the prices, like, just for a park, just say the sports park, um, the mayor just stated that some persons may have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars, some people may have to pay higher. I just wanna make sure it's fair across the board, that it is being recorded for the record. And what we do for the, um, events, like for persons who have, um, non-profits? What would we do to help them if they come and need to use the park or something like? What angle would be able to help the non-profits, did y'all think about that?
Again, with that, um, doing anything other than with the fee schedule, a lot of support would be donated from the funds, so we can institute, uh, something different just for nonprofits. We would hope that, you know, the community would rally together, help them create the funds a lot of times, especially with these fees, like a seven hundred fifty dollar fee, that's only if you're charging a nation. And most times, if you're having a large event, you're gonna make that back tenfold. So, and to grant speaking, we don't think these are two out of reach for organizations.
I would, I would like to have the public to ask questions at this time. Y'all, speak back to the council session. Say where you at, gentlemen, because this is, this is public participation coming up, this one's right now. I saw you raise your hand first and everybody else, just line up. You have questions about this particular ordinance, then you can address any one of us, but there are those non-profits. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
One more, eight two six east seven straight, Bublous, Louisiana, seven oh four two seven. I just wanna say, um, when we helped gentlemen two, we had been charged, we had been being charged for the park. And, um, I was horrified because ever since then, I don't know if they gonna keep it rest of the way or what with my name paying for gentlemen two, money had been sitting in the drawer. So, we, when we started, we have paid, we have also paid, I think, um, I think once it cut off, what, uh, uh, yeah. Four hundred forty-five dollars an hour, and we had to. So, we've been paying, so this is gonna be a chance that they asking for, it should be okay. Because anything that, uh, for gentlemen, we was being charged for, thank you.
I will back up what Miss Andre, uh, Rhonda has said, uh, was on planning and zoning. I did see a fee schedule for, and it was an old one, for the Casy Park. Uh, to use the whole park is five hundred two fifty per stage. I remember that coming up in a, uh, planning and zoning of all meetings back in sixteen seventeen. So I just want to point that out, I'll run a record.
So, six twenty-two, you can add this up, it's Louisiana. I was born and raised here, I played football here. We paid for the fields way back thirty years ago, we paid for the fields then. But we, but the parents were always charged like a dollar a person to go in or five dollars a vehicle to go in. That's how they covered paying the fees. They do that in possible, that's how they pay the fees on popple bill. I need some place out there, the dollar per person, five dollars per vehicle, they get in.
Okay. Alright, please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes, it starts with a N.
Deborah Porcelli, seven six four Marshall Richardson Road. Um, again, I mean, I encouraged this, I think that's great, but I still have this concern that I brought up earlier about the small events is less than fifty people and the large event is more than one hundred. So what happens to the fifty-one through ninety-nine size groups? They're not in the fee schedule. And also, um, I just wanted to bring you up for clarification. Like, if a family wants to go to the park and they're gonna have a little picnic in a pavilion, they don't have to sign up for this twenty-five dollars to sit in the pavilion, fur you out, you know, tap along.
Like, that's, no, that's, that's correct. You will not have to as long as it's not reserved.
Right, right, unless it has a reserve sign, you can do together if you're small. Yeah, like I have to.
By the Robson level twenty-seven at New J. As the ordinance stand now, the way it was read, I would think it should pass. Why? Because you're not making exceptions for non-profit, that's gonna hurt the kids. If you have an organization and you got, just say, over ten kids in that organization, if it's a non-profit, you should be exempt from these fees. Let's help the kids. If you come and you're a dope, you wanna have a softball game, y'all just wanna have fun, then you should pay. It should be some exception, it's disabled veterans. They wanna have something at the park, the park day, they should be exempt from these fees. Always felt even be took in consideration. We trying to help Bublous. It's good that you know you should pay something, ain't nothing wrong with that. Had an incident at Casy Park come about this weekend, I was there. Two people had, uh, uh, passed to have the same provision at the same time. Neither one of them paid for it, you see what I'm saying? They had, both of them had a permit, but the permit was given for the same time and the same day. That was a problem, I was there for it. I know y'all got calls on it, I know y'all need it. Cause they was out there laying, I told them, look here, ain't nothing, neither one of y'all would do, we just gonna get through this one today. So it's a good thing that y'all bring it, cause that'll bring more structure to it. But it need to have some provisions, like I said, for nonprofits with over ten kids in their organization. Disabled veterans, they shouldn't have to pay these fees. Outside of that, y'all be paying, Bublous need, need the money, thank you.
I just would like to clarify, um, that somebody who has gotten in trouble for giving to nonprofits, I'm sympathetic to the cause. But the auditors have been clear, the only way that you can donate to a nonprofit is through a cooperative and a devil agreement. We cannot go listing on these fees, you're exempt if you're a nonprofit. If you wanna extend financial grace and gratitude to, to a nonprofit organization, then present a C E A. Vote on the C E A, that's how it'll go. But in terms of putting it on here, making exemptions, we're not allowed to do that.
So you said you made that, we need to get a.
So you said you made that, with these games are for nonprofits too?
So with that said, as the ordinance stands at this time, vote no. If, if we, if we can't, if we can't get it, well, they vote no.
I'll state this, I'll state this again for comprehension's sake. You cannot put out a fee schedule just for nonprofits, you have to bring a CDA for each nonprofit. If you want to give that for nonprofits, get all the sports groups together, write one big CDA, pass it so they can use the parks. Other than that, that does not impact the speed schedule. Well, if you pass a CDA to help the nonprofits or not, this is totally a separate issue.
I have to back the mayor on that. You have to have a cooperative endeavor bringing between the nonprofit and the city, must happen, okay? So that keeps the city out of trouble. Alright, moving along, um, Mr. Farrell, please state your name and address.
Mr. Farrell, nineteen thirty-one, even place. I said, I'm gonna say it this way, we get up here and say even justice fall, so let's do it one way, even justice fall. And shut it down and let's do it right. Would you do for one, do for all, thank you.
Richard Corsetti, Marshall Richardson Road, seven sixty-four. I remember in this room, at city council meetings, that no one worried about the lighting. And I will go back, this is when Wendy was mayor, and Merton Taylor would come up here and complain about that the lights were left on late at night. And nobody cared about what the bill. Now, between the mayor and Mr. Bailey, I think we need to sit down a little bit and go over what that lighting cost if someone needs to take over that property and play ball. So that way they, you know, if you're gonna have these companies come in here, what it costs to really run the ball field. That way they were not losing any money, just like the mayor used to say. I can't have y'all coming in the park and it's costing us more than what we can to do a function. You know, he says, I just don't have that kind of light, and I don't blame him, it's probably been done in the past a million times, and losing thousands. And he knows it, the mayor knows. So I feel as though that between the lighting and everything with that, that ball field cost, I think we need to check with energy and find out really what all those lights cost to run for a hundred hours. They know. And the other thing is, is the mayor's right, you got to do this right, or you're gonna wind up in trouble. And he knows what trouble is, he knows the rules. And, you know, you'd love to have all these kids come here for nothing and do everything for nothing, but you can't do it these days. So thank you, mayor, thank you for stepping up to the place for this and taking a good swing, thank you.
Alright guys, we got a lot on the agenda, so let's keep this moving, okay?
So these are ten grand round, I lose that. Uh, I was listening at the figures that Mr. Zidzki presented, they sound like they were really inflating to me, unless you want like New York City or New York or somebody that's got money for the weekend, to put the bills in those shapes. We need livable, reworkable, and stuff like that, but now, this is to the council. I think you've been presenting figures tonight, the East tonight, that you've not had a chance to really sit down and look and study because of the way it's been presented to you tonight, that you had thought you were bringing it to a level of you, and that's been insisted that you take it up tonight. You're willing to do that, but are you really jumping the gun and not being diligent in your duty? Another thing, I'm gonna say that, you cannot just say, everything in there, just this word, parts, whatever it was. You take it out, you can't do that, you gotta do by line by line and take those lines out, not once, but every line, you need to rework that ordinance, thank you.
So, even though these little fees, cause that's not much, can I ask you this question? So, what about if they, they gonna have a cleanup for it, or if they even miss, what happens? I mean, oh, y'all gonna charge a fee for that, or that's the fee that's charged?
So, concerning, concerning cleanup fees, we have not added to this, uh, ordinance, we didn't want to do too much at one time. We decided for a quarter, it's definitely that it would be appropriate to add a cleaning fee, we can do so at any time, uh, but it's not on here at the moment. Even that fees that we propose is just, something goes somewhere, and you have to make upgrades before you ask for the work. Um, I also like to kind of address the concerns about, uh, nonprofits. I don't think anybody would let an event go just because they couldn't pay a hundred and fifty dollars. I think if everybody was able to get three dollars, we could make that happen. Um, so any organization needing support to make this happen, we sure the community would be more than happy to pitch in, we probably haven't paid another dollar, so I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, I, I, that's not, but that's not, but they, they, if you got a sports fee, you gonna probably play three months. If you playing three months, if you got fourteen, they gotta practice several, you can't, you know, or separate fee. And so if I got a twenty dollar per field fee, um, then that's gonna be four hundred dollars just for practice. And that's just one week for practice, then I got a weekend fee that I gotta pay just for my games. Then I gotta go all over again next year for the season's three months, and so the football team uses those fees, um, this, uh, uh, the guys are using it for the soccer, and so what I'm saying is, with these current fees, this will be thousands of dollars. Not hundred, hit your mouth for hundred, thousands of dollars for practice and games, and that's my reservation. I understand individuals doing things, wrong people, but obviously even paying insurance month, somebody's filled in and paid, so somebody's already put the tab on their insurance and their registration too, and now somebody's got the tab for practice and play, that's my only concern, is football, I know they practice out there all the time. Uh, three, four days a week, and, and guys tell me to use soccer back on, they practice four days a week. You know, by the time the season's over, that's, that's just a lot of money, that's all they can have.
I do have, I do have council's place as well, but I want to.
Time, wait a second, um, we're, we're now moved into council discussion.
I would just, just wanted to kind of push it back on a little bit and say that Bogalusa doesn't exist in the background. No matter what city I call up, they all have people who are underserved, they all have organizations that have to pay these fees. This is not anything exclusive to Bogalusa, and like I said, these fees are well under what everybody else pays. So I think, again, as a community, we can make it happen. This is mine.
Uh, I did have opportunity to meet Mr. Vondo on last, on last meeting, and, uh, we was speaking about the fees, which speak, the fee schedule was updated, and, uh, I let him know that, for example, Avenue B Sports Flex was, uh, fifty dollars, uh, per day. Uh, but if there are some additional admission charges, it would be, uh, two hundred per, per day. Same with the, um, Cassidy Park, uh, being a hundred dollars a day, with admissions being five hundred dollars, and, uh, the entire park closed would be five hundred dollars, I'm sorry, and with admission be seven hundred and fifty. And my, and the final, uh, the Bogalusa Sports Arena, which is a hundred dollars a day, five hundred dollars with, um, with additional admissions. And then we looked, he brought my attention about the, uh, the, the small events. I defined, that's the, um, the hundred dollars for four hours, uh, twenty-five dollars for four hours, and so on and so forth. So my particular question was, what if, uh, there are small, uh, events and large events for more than one day? Uh, would the price, could the prices possibly be negotiated upon, similar to what, uh, Council O'Ree was speaking? If you run up in funds, but if it could possibly be negotiated. Also, uh, I did take the liberty, um, to contact, uh, I was waiting for your, your estimates, but Frankleton, uh, I spoke with Frankleton, which has, uh, the Washington Parish Fairground, they have, uh, no charge, uh, for, uh, their practice facility, that's the park that's on Parker Street. Uh, no, they have no charge for family facility, but on Parker Street, they charge three hundred dollars, uh, for, for their, uh, plus liability insurance. Kentwood charges twenty-five dollars, uh, per practice at basketball games, for two hours insurance, and, um, uh, one practice field, they have one practice field and one, uh, field, uh, paying field, and one field for leisure field. And I asked them, uh, how about, um, uh, they charge five hundred dollars per season, uh, for, for the high school. Uh, Bee Springs, uh, now, i- in, in, uh, San Tammy, they have these district, different districts, District eleven, District twelve, but in Bee, Bee Springs, they have so much, uh, for their entire park, they have no charge. Manville, um, they have to call me back on that, Bush, and Amit, no, Amit, no practice fee for, for sports, large events. And I know that we have to look at our particular, uh, city, uh, to see what would help us and to see what would generate revenue for us. But I just did, Angie has no part, uh, Fosen didn't call me back, um, uh, there's a, a District twelve, uh, they have District one, two, four, six, seven, eleven, twelve, fourteen, it's San Tammy. Uh, Hammond has, uh, a ball field, twenty-five dollars per hour, with their insurance, they have additional insurance. And, um, Tangi Maho, uh, I didn't get an answer from them, Tik Fau, no answer from there. Uh, Madisonville, uh, or Ma- Madisonville, Pavillion, a hundred dollars, uh, deposit. And, uh, they have the Coke, the Coke Hill, uh, recreational sports, uh, facility. Pearl River, no fees for their parks, and, uh, Ponchatoula, parks for events, no fees, fees profit, but, and, uh, fifty participated, uh, fifty is participated gathering, one small ballpark, and, uh, it's, I could go on and on, and some, they have no, no field or no parks, and, uh, but the, the particular, the particular point I'm trying to make, I'm trying to, 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 like the mayor had indicated, we have to, we have to indicate if we are going, if we are donating these funds, or if we are generating funds, if we're gonna make some exceptions, uh, to, to some of the, uh, individuals that are attempting some type of, uh, resources for our children, you know, in the parks itself, so.
Okay, let's keep this moving, any other council discussion?
Hi, um, this fee does include, um, practices, right?
Correct.
Okay, so why would we be charging people to practice, well, people to practice? That, that, that's another concern, I know it's supposed to, um, a while back, I've been hearing about these fees, and I do agree that we need fees to accommodate breakdowns and things that go on, keeping the field clean and settled, but why would we charging people to practice? These amounts should be just on game day or events that's going on, where they can collect at least a dollar, or three dollars to get in admission, so where they're paying out to the city, they're able to put back into their funds to take the kids, like, some, some baseball, football games, um, they have banquet, and that money is used to help buy the trophies, not pay the coaches, cause that should be volunteer. Um, put money into the concession, you think to buy trophies, um, help buy the kids who pay for uniforms, pay for these bats and balls that I, I was told at one point, um, the city was paying for, and I have three sons, so I know I bought their own gear, but we do have some kids that wasn't able, and the parents need to keep, um, donate to those parents who couldn't, uh, afford this, but like, to charge kids to have to go out to practice, that's how they're able to build their skills. And you think about the coaches and the parents and everyone that gets out there to help them, that's just volunteer. They're probably getting off of work at one to watch their kid practice, or just for safety purposes, or just to be a coach on the team. So I do have a problem with us charging kids to practice. Cause I can tell you, they're not charging at the, at the high school, and those kids practice long hours. The school makes money off of games to remodel the school, so why couldn't this just be like on game day, um, if you're having a game or whatever, or court or etc., come over with your permit for that reason? Could you take that into consideration as well? And I know we have a lot, a lot of time to review this, but I do like to ask questions for the record so that the citizens, citizens can know that we are being fair, we will spend your money accordingly. We're not just gonna put it in a drawer, um, hide it over here, or go out buy new cars, or do this with your money. We're gonna make sure that we're doing everything tactfully, um, and make sure that things are being kept up at these facilities, but I just think it's a little steep to charge people to practice.
I would, I would say back to that, the chair and the driver seat here, if you can bring anything on this page. If that's where we want to go, under individual ball fields, twenty-five dollars a weekday, everybody, a weekend per ball field, make an amendment, come. With the exception of sporting practices.
I'd also like to add in that with most of these cities that we did research, um, they do charge the practices, so this is not, again, it's not anything new to Bogalusa. It's standard practice, as Long Beach requires you to rent a minimum of two hours of residence, thirty-three dollars per hour. So practicing soccer for two hours, Monday of the week, sixty-six dollars per, that's for a resident. Non-resident is sixty-four per hour, that's over a hundred and thirty dollars for an hour of practice, so we are still well, well below what anybody else is charging.
Anywhere else did you check, Mr. Chris, or did they Long Beach, for own practice?
McCallum charges a hundred dollars. City of Hammond, baseball softball field, night rentals, twenty-five dollars an hour, tournament, two hundred dollars a day.
That's, that's for practice at Hammond?
Correct, night rentals. Concession stands, a hundred dollar deposit, rental fifty dollars a day.
And how much are their fees for their games on game day at Hammond? Did you ask them that, so that we can have one basic, um?
It would be the same, so whatever the rest was for.
Five dollars, six dollars to enter on game day?
Oh, yeah, entry, no, no, I would guess as for the private, uh, league to decide.
Alright, we're gonna have to bring this, we got multiple things here to discuss, so any other council discussion this time? I'm going to ask for a roll call on this particular item, discussing park fees only, and either stress that park fees, is he calling them? And it's park fees only.
I did, I did want to look into trying to amend it to our, making attention for practices. Yeah. So I make a motion to amend, can I amend orders, I get it. I might just make a motion to amend.
Alright. Motion, uh, roll call on the minute.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman O'Ree?
Aye.
President Corsetti?
Aye.
Senator?
Aye.
Believe it or not, we have to leave a public discussion.
Tobias, eleven twenty-seven, Avenue J. Anything targeted kids at non-profit, we, we can't do that. We can't target the kids, we need to be trying to help, we don't need to be trying to charge them in no way possible. If they can be amended to exclude what, 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 uh, If they can be amended to exclude what, 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 uh, practices, it can be amended to exclude other things too. Peter, if you're gonna do it, do it right.
The practice will kill Bogalusa.
Yeah, that's too much.
That'll kill Bogalusa.
That's too much.
They can help.
Bogalusa, and then quit trying to compare it to other cities. We need to do what Bogalusa need. We need to look at Bogalusa and say, hey, this is the situation that we are in. And this is what we need to do. If we can go without them finances for the parks, for this, for the kids, then we need to try to do that. We need to do everything we can to keep from trying to charge these kids and keep them from being a part of these activities and stuff. We need to do everything we can, everything. They need to be, it took into consideration first, being known by the people who give it their time of, not getting paid for this. Y'all gotta put some of this into consideration. That's why I'm asking. We need real leadership when it comes to Bogalusa. You hear me, Mr. Mark? You hear me, Mr. O'Ree? You hear the council people? We need leadership. We don't need people trying to do things just because of this or just because of that. Your own agenda, that ain't happening Bogalusa. So as it's saying, they need to rewrite that all. It ain't right. If it can't, if it's true this, it's true that, we not targeting the underserved and the underprivileged. And with this, that's what we doing. I was one of those kids. You hear me, my mom ain't paying nothing. Thank God I had Coach Mike Harrington. God bless his soul. Thank God I had him. So anything you're doing to target these kids, to make them not be able to play any parts, hey, council, do, do, do it for the kids, Bogalusa.
And how long is the coverage, Mark?
My name is Tommy Tyson, fourteen ten Max Street. I've been helping sponsors, kids ever since Bud and Lundy. Always been on the outside, Mike O'Ree know that. I've been always, when they need uniforms, I make sure they got it. I never leave to step off and rag both. Always been a part of this community. I, um, think that we need to reach the citizens for people that practicing, the kids practicing and stuff. I, I don't think we should charge that because right now this time is so hard for people to get, uh, the kids to be sponsored. They used to sponsor, you know, they go to grocery stores and stuff like that. Now, you know, they've got to step out the box now and help these, the community and, and the kids, you know? I know Bogalusa need money if it is a game, if a game going on or something like that, you had to charge it, you know? That includes the, you know, recreation and they can sell this and sell that to make some money. But them kids get out there, I'm telling you, it's so easy to lay leave. When you even go down to the lay leave thing, it's about, they, they charge a lot now. Do y'all really know what's going on out there? You know? And Tobias, I like to say that when you're playing, it's something. I was one of the sponsors, if I was in Bogalusa, I was one of the sponsors to help. All the coaches know. They said go to Tyson, he a king in summer, go to Tyson. And that's been happening. Bud and Lundy, you know, he's about sixty years old now. So if them kids get there and practice, I don't think y'all should charge them. If they have some game or something, charge it if something because, um, they, you need to pay for the lights, you need to clean up, you gotta have something to keep things going. All right.
Thank you, Coach Tyson, and thank you for taking your time with children of Bogalusa. Thank you, sir.
While you're there, eight two sixty Zen Street, Bogalusa, Louisiana, seven oh four two seven. I understand what they're saying about charging the children for practice, that's fine. The game, that's fine. But speaking on the other side, being a nonprofit organization, I can say this. They do donate, we do have people that will donate. So the only thing that I'm saying, I can out there as a non-profit organization and hustle. And to tell you something, speaking from my experience in the different nonprofit organizations, I mean, you have sponsors out there that were sponsored because guess what? And immediately have had tax write-off. So now with the children, with practice, I can see they're leaning on it. But everything is, with the gas and stuff like that, and other cities, they charge and stuff, I think the prices that y'all have is great. But just, um, if you go back and revisit with them practicing, because they practice a lot. But other than that, I'm for the charge, but like I said, being on the other side, being a nonprofit. They do donate, we have a lot of donate this year, thank you.
And I just had to say, again, about nonprofits, I know a lot of people do donate, but a lot of people don't. And I'm not gonna call no neighbor or anything, but to the person, I'm not gonna call the organization, but I do know that the mayor, out of goodness of his heart, donated to a certain organization and they did have to give the money back. And he probably, probably broke his heart and he had to go to them, and I'm speaking in terms of your town mayor, that probably broke the man heart and he had to go back and say, hey, I had to do that because I don't want to do anything unethical. So I want to put that out there for clarification too. But however, a lot of people are not hustlers like Mrs. Michelle.
Right.
She's gonna go out and get, well, I may sit over here and be afraid to ask. Just because I may get it on the first try, somebody in the back may knock. So as a councilperson and as taxpayers, we have to be very careful of how, how we vote and things. And I know we shouldn't wait till we get to here to address it, but yes, we should because the citizens have this, they're reading and they're looking for us to make the right decisions. And as Mr. Tommy Tyson stated, he has donated and he has given behind doors without anybody knowing from the goodness of his heart, and so have other businesses. The last time my kids played, Schultz Rehab donated to that particular team so that the kids can have uniforms, so that say, parents like myself from having to come out of pocket and Mr. Tommy, and et cetera, and so on, need to keep in here, donate without even saying anything. So it is a hardship for some parents. So we do have to keep that in mind.
Mr. Roddick, please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes are starting after the break.
Okay, I'll agree, Andrew Roddick, sixteen thirty-four, Montana Ranch. Thank you all, just in regards to what you're currently discussing as for field usage. When, when it comes to nonprofits, I think if you even want to take it a step further than nonprofits and make the exclusion limited to nonprofits local to our area, I think that that is a great way forward because I feel like at the end of the day, if we're talking about making money here, is making money off of nonprofit organizations that exist in Bogalusa truly a priority for the city? And is that truly in the best interest when we're talking about the actual margins we're gonna be taking away from the fee schedule over the course of the season? Now comparatively, take a look at the impact that it would have. And I'm speaking personally, my own organization as a nonprofit, like the money has to come from somewhere. And we keep our price as low as we possibly can. You will not find a cheaper soccer league to get all of your equipment and registration anywhere in the state of Louisiana. You will not find a cheaper flight football anywhere else in the state of Louisiana. The reason we're able to do that is because we minimize our costs absolutely. Adding additional costs onto that, even if reduced, is going to have to cause us to either ace and definitely look to more citizens to donate money, in which case we're just still getting the money from, from the same businesses they get hit up over and over again to make the city money off of nonprofit youth sports. And to me, that just, I mean, it just doesn't really sound right. At the end of the day, if there absolutely needed to be a fee from the city for nonprofits local to Bogalusa servicing the youth, which I still disagree with, if there needed to be one, then tell me, what is the actual amount of expense incurred on the city for a game usage? And we can talk about covering that expense. So at least the city does not go into the red, although I would say spending for the kids is good spending. But if the city is that concerned with spending money on the kids and not losing money, then let's talk about the actual end up amount of expense that goes into us using the field for a few hours. And we would be open, if there is no other way, we would be open to cover that. But allowing the city to make money off of our nonprofit sports leagues, maybe have volunteers, I mean, that, like what are we talking about here? Over the course of a season, that's less than three thousand dollars. Really? It's, it's that important to make less than three thousand dollars off of nonprofits closely? That's, that's really what we're, what we're talking about here. I think there needs to be exclusions, I think the way it's written right now is not acceptable. I think that exclusions for nonprofits are also standard, even discounts. If you look at the Baton Rouge complex, they offer a discount for nonprofits, it's a standard practice. It's used, it's normal. And I think especially here, it's what we need, it's in the best interest of the kids. It will allow us, our price low, to keep ourselves as accessible as possible to as many kids as possible. That's what it's all about, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roddick. Thank you for what you've done for the children of Bogalusa, thank you, sir.
Aneed Graal, one ten grand drive. I guess most of you probably know, we asked for it in the store for thirty years before my husband rested away. But before that, and many years after, Aneed Graal served the Little League groups over and over and over. That's been my heart, I always tell that, just not too long ago. But I want you to stop thinking that long ago. We had all the children get together and they had school supplies, because they couldn't afford school supplies. But we don't do that in our country because they can't pay school fees. I know that in our store, we had coaches that played on the end. And they would leave and out, they'd work at the paper mill, and one team, there was three men, worked at the paper mill. They, they're paid to keep their team going. They bought what they needed because those kids couldn't do it. And right now, you look at and you see kids who go in the bush to play, they're going to fight to play. They're leaving here, those that have the ability to do it. But all the kids in Bogalusa don't have that ability. That's the ones that are getting left behind, who have no choice. They can't pay it, they don't have transportation, or the parents will have to take them somewhere else to play. The city owns those ballparks, the people own the ballparks, the children own the ballparks. It's not, the city government itself will own them. And we do have a small tax, the small yet, but it's all for salaries. To, when it was originally set in, it was to help the sports. It doesn't count, but that's what it was for. And we still pay it every year. But I want you to really consider being as economical as you can and remember those kids that would not do it. That you see, we've had actual kids from here play Little League that had to have help, that went to play the professional football. And most of them were students, but think about it, and they, they will never have a chance. Just remember those kids, thank you.
Keith Merrill, nine two five, this sports department, seventy. I'm in full agreement with this regulation charging for the parks because people say back, well, it was free back when I was a child. I'm forty-five years old, it's a long time since I was a child. So prices have skyrocketed. Nothing in life is free. It might be free for leaps, somebody paying for it. So I say go ahead and charge for the parks, but don't try to charge for the daylights, daylights out of people. Maybe have like, uh, uh, this one big price for your parks, your games and the practices, just have one little price. But charge something, don't let nobody get away scot-free. Because if, if we do that, then our city gonna continue to go, we gonna go under. We not gonna have much money as we could have. So I mean, we will support this and ask the council to put, uh, vote in favor of this to establish the fees and regulations for the city of Bogalusa Parks and Recreation. Please let's do this and let's move Bogalusa forward to this day in time. And let's not be living like we in the May Day days. Because, I'm saying this when I'm sitting out and I'm preaching, we love to talk. I understand people are going through a hard time and they need sponsorship. But a lot of parents, they buy what they want about, they, they buy what their kids want. And they buy what they want about their kids. They buy a two hundred dollar pair of shoes and all this kind of stuff. So if parents can do that, they can do this if they want, because they can pay for these, uh, these prices for their kids' games. And not make excuses, not a lot that can't, then, uh, you know, we have to try to help them. Try to get them to some kind of agency that can help them out, but the church. We come out of our pocket, I know I would. I don't have kids, but I, I love to sponsor the kids. Sometimes they get kind of aggravated, but I love to do it. So I say let's, let's not make excuses. People do what they want to do and I support the bar in this and I say let's go ahead and charge for the parks here in Bogalusa, God bless you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this alone, you all have already passed the motion, made an exception. We've already stated that nonprofits cannot receive a financial benefit without a C A. We're sitting here going so. We're so hesitant to raise the fee. Anytime you raise a fee, y'all, you either vote it out or.
State law states that you, every time you've amended, then this, every time I made an amendment, you had to turn around and put it back out in public discussion.
That's not my point, that's not my point. The point that I made is, when it's time to raise the fees, you come up with all these excuses. You're talking to somebody, before I got this job, I was a school teacher. I was running an organization called Red Bull USA, hosting events out of my eye. So don't sit here and try to make it a dichotomy of we're targeting the kids. I don't take that lightly. And to sit here, anytime it's about raising fees, I don't know, but anytime it's about raising a salary or dish out unauthorized salaries to departments behind the administration's back. Okay, you know, we need that, you know, they would get income from that. Where do y'all think this money is coming from? Like I tell the department heads, where is the money coming from? Pass the fees, we reached a compromise. We compromised on the, the practices which we discussed, bring the C A, who care that much? Bring the C A before the table. But as for this, we keep going in circles and getting off of the circle of attraction, going and making another circle. Let's vote. We got people here from out of town, they gotta drive, they gotta drive out back home. And they attended item number seven, and we on number two.
Yo, we gonna make him next, by the way, I'm gonna hump a lead just for a second. Y'all are gonna be next, I'm gonna make y'all next, but Johnny, you need to go out where the road. No, I'm gonna make off of example, just saying.
Carry on with your agenda, just present, we'll stay here all night.
And I want to tell you something else, I'm gonna tell you, watching my mind, guys. In twenty twenty-three, during the soccer season, there was an early administration. There's a bunch of business owners that did not receive their signs and their plaques. They're paying money. Who was in charge of that?
Who was in charge of that?
No, I'm saying baseball, whatever it was, since baseball was back to the baseball season. Now, signups, it's in early spring of twenty twenty-three, what happened to that money?
They don't give signs the way that's popular to the city.
If that person still, if they gave that guy the money?
Well, the question I asked you was back up. Was that individual group, those were groups that was doing that maybe?
That was baseball.
That's baseball, we're talking about baseball, let's stick to baseball, that's baseball.
Okay, what's the question?
Where, what happened to the signs, businesses, brands that paid four hundred dollars?
Yes, in person.
Okay, now that's correct.
Well, they weren't for the city, or somebody else, well.
No, it was, what, what, let's be honest, what is the question?
I'm asking.
The signs were placed and the signs are still in possession of the city as they have always been this quarter. Okay, going into concession stand, there are signs dated back to twenty twelve. Well, who collected the money? That's what I'm asking.
The utility department collects the money, they collect all money, regardless of what fee it is. You have to go to that order window and pay your fee.
For the signs, for the sign, for to provide the ballpark, right?
Correct.
Okay, because I know businesses paid it and they said they didn't get their signs.
There was twenty-six signs on this campus.
Right, okay, let's move on, let's go for a vote. Let's go for a vote. We're moving on, but actually, we're saying, yeah, even better. We do have to move on now, we're going to here to the clock. This is how it is. This is how it is.
My name is John Wayne, two oh seven, two bridge room. Um, I just wanted to get up and speak for a second. Um, I'm a local military, but I also volunteer. Um, when I started my start in community service, um, I volunteered for T-Ball as a coach. Little League, um, sports, the Bogalusa Sports Association back in the day. I served on the board. And then we went to soccer, and then I did baseball. And then as I, I guess, helped for many years with the Sports Association, then I gave back and sponsored to the kids. And then with my work at the real estate, I always donated to teams and made sure that they had uniforms, and anything they had to do, their class. As a mom, I did that because I wanted to, out of the goodness of my heart, I did it for my children. There were so many children on those teams that did not have someone that could buy their uniforms, or their shoes, or their, or the camera practice. I would pick up kids and I would take them home as a coach. I volunteered, loved it, would do it in the heart of me. Hopefully, I'll have grandkids one day that I can do that with. But, um, please don't charge the kids for practice. I mean, I'm saying this as a mom. Those sort of kids, they don't draw a lot of money. I understand if you want to charge them for a game, a dollar or two dollars to get in, or three dollars, or whatever you have to do to make sure the lights are paid and the yards are managed. But please, the prices on the individual days for practice and certain fees on there are just a little high for me. And if there was a film that I could build and help with the parish, or something we can do, I would do it. Just because these kids, this is our community, this is our foundation, they run with respect. And we get to love them as children, and we want them to be involved. And this is something that we need to push and support and do an outreach for all these kids. And don't let them go. That's it. Thank you.
All right, we're closing, uh, public discussion, our council discussion on this amendment. Uh, well, actually, what we got?
The government of the park thing, this is back on the park.
All right, any public discussion? We don't have to...
Uh, for clarity, uh, we did an amendment, from what I understand, we are amending, um, to allow nonprofits to, correct me if I'm wrong, to allow nonprofits to come forth and submit, um, their CEOs. Are we listening? Is that what we amended? Or, uh, yeah. Is that what we amended? We're allowing the, uh, the nonprofits to come forth and submit their applications for, um, a CEO, a general agreement, corporate general agreement, is that, is... I just want to be clear.
That is the amendment I put out, I mean.
Well, it's three seconds, then.
Yeah.
To, um, take the practice fees out.
Oh, take the practice, okay.
Yeah, take the practice fees.
Okay, gotcha.
But, that's the reason, we... And I, I live in the projects, but honestly, truthfully, I was told last week that we're not, we're not informing this tonight. Um, as you see, we introduce two separate orders, so I, I will be the first to make, I'm not prepared for this at all. I have plans on getting some of these other organizations. Because it was told to me that we're not voting on, we're gonna take out the general. And we're gonna introduce some separately, which gave us a little more time to dig into them. So I'm not really prepared for it. And so, I, I, I really, I would love to take it until we can try to have us a little more time to answer the details after we can debate. Now, yeah, I'd like to make a motion, say a motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to type with the amendment. Amendment on.
Well, I'm seeing the order.
The whole order.
Yes, the whole order.
We're gonna take with the whole order. Okay. So he's taking, he's making a motion to table it. Uh, and I got a motion and a second. It's pending. Roll call.
Counselwoman Snid?
Aye.
Counselwoman Kate?
Aye.
Counselwoman Reed?
Aye.
Justice Irvin?
Aye.
Counselwoman Depp?
All right, thank you.
One more question, this one we brought up, that I was expecting.
That's the next one. So I'm gonna show Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, work everything out right now. What we're gonna do, we're gonna skip ahead, remember, we're gonna skip ahead here, and we're gonna allow the, uh, retail strategies to come forward. I know they have a distance to travel, so gentlemen, uh, you may stand up and, uh, 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 I'm gonna read that word, I mean, Counselwoman Kate is gonna read that ordinance. Currently, it's eight twenty-three P M. Oh, we got two people inside.
Okay, ordinance to authorize the area of the city of Bogalusa, Louisiana, to execute an agreement for professional services with Retail Strategies LLC to provide, uh, certain professional consulting services regarding retail academy and related activities. Whereas Retail Strategies LLC is a consulting service which, uh, possesses a high degree of professionalism and, uh, skills and experience. Uh, another, we do, we do have, uh, our speaker here to speak on retail strategies. We had a meeting a couple of months ago, and we had a, a meeting last week, economic development meeting last week. And she will be speaking, um, this, uh,
Drax, Lacy Backers.
Ms. Backers and Valerie Dillon, thank you all so much for your cautions, it's great to caution you for this. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Lacy Backers, Retail Strategies. Two two O, Manuela, Errean, Alzera. Thank y'all for having me, uh, as we've done this evening. Um, as Counselwoman Kate mentioned, Retail Strategies, um, we have been discussing with the cities for a program we have called Retail Academy. It's an economic development program for the city to understand how to attract and recruit in new retail restaurant and hospitality businesses while also supporting your existing local businesses. Um, it is a twelve-month program, um, that I believe there is a packet detail, uh, information included in the packet. As Ms. Kate mentioned, I did speak to the Economic Development Committee meeting, in town meeting last week for public engagement and public discussion. And I'm here now to answer any questions of the council.
Uh, the primary question that I believe that should be shared with our constituents is the particular cost. And, uh, as you know, we, uh, were looking into our orphanes to be a, a source of, like, value for this particular project. Uh, could you expand on that?
Yes, so Retail Academy is a twelve-month program, uh, it's the economic development training program for all of the city. Um, Retail Academy is twenty-five thousand for the twelve months. It is a eligible use of the American Rescue Plan Act orphanes. Um, there's money given from the U.S. Treasury.
Could you tell us about, um, particular, uh, the program itself and how we can provide jobs for the city of Bogalusa?
Yes. Yes, so Retail Strategies, we are a real estate company that does, uh, community development, uh, of course, in the counties just like yours. And what we'll do is we'll look at, uh, the consumer base of the, um, city, which will also, um, help us identify people. Um, yes, the residents and constituents here are your top priority, but we are also going to break the light how you have, um, uh, consumers that come in from outside of these city limits throughout the parish and other parishes that are coming into Bogalusa to shop and eat and spend their money. And as we can identify additional businesses that would be the right fit for Bogalusa, um, it would be an increase in jobs for the city. Um, it'd be increased in sales tax collections that would go back for the city. And it would add quality of life amenities of all types of retail restaurants, um, medical hospitality, and other types of commercial businesses.
And we also discussed on last week, um, we can elaborate more, that, um, we have a vacancy buildings here. And one of the goals will need to reach out to some of the local owners here, um, if the new business comes, to actually utilize those businesses and working so forth with, um, the cost of bringing the building for the new business. If you can elaborate on that, so we can sit down.
Yes, and so, um, one of the first priorities that we would be, would be to look at existing vacancies, properties that have high turnover, properties that are not at their highest and best use, and how we can identify, um, quality businesses, uh, high-credit tenants that could go into these vacancies, and which businesses, um, would be interested in that type of property, and how we as an outside real estate consultant can help identify their sites, and then speak with the property owners, and speak with the city on how to find the right, um, fix for that vacancy if there is, and how to, um, work with the city on, um, those of highest and best use of looking at, um, code enforcement, um, to allow for these businesses to be more enticing to the building, uh, for the building to be more enticing to the business.
So you're going to be using our existing, uh, buildings that are empty, right, to formulate your plan?
Yes, yes, like you said, the company name is Retail Strategies, so it is a very researched strategy. Um, like I said, looking at, uh, existing vacancies in buildings that are not at their highest and best use would be typically one of the first priorities in locating a group. Um, and so that would, you know, add a tenant to a building that is possibly sitting vacant. Um, so there's no property tax that's being collected on that.
All right. We can circle back for a second. I'm gonna make a motion, and, um, I have a second. Because again, I open up for public discussion, so the public can ask questions in this box. All right, at this time, I open up the floor to public discussion.
Someone?
Okay. Anyone from the public has questions for Retail Strategies? Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Chris Massingale. I'm actually a neighbor to the south. I live in St. Cabina Parish. However, I work in the five Florida parishes of a certified professional economic developer. I'm the CEO of the St. Cabina Economic Development Corporation, and we actually do a lot of collaborative work on behalf of the Economic Development Administration, Louisiana Economic Development. In fact, Mr. President, if I may, if you permission, I'd like to introduce to you to your economic recovery corps that has been placed here in the five Florida parishes. Dee Pope is actually doing work in Washington Parish and St. Cabina. Here for a three-year fellowship, uh, courtesy of the Economic Development Administration and the International Economic Development Council. What I would like to do real quickly, Mr. President, and on behalf of the mayor, the mayor and I, working on several economic development projects. Uh, he and I have teamed up on several fronts to help Bogalusa and Washington Parish. It is important for Bogalusa and Washington Parish to be successful, just like it is in St. Cabina, just like it is in St. Cabina, just like it is in Tangier, the Hope. We are a region, and as we continue to see this region grow, there are going to be increased economic opportunities. I've been in this space for twenty-one years. I've had the opportunity to work in a lot of different places. In fact, I cut my teeth and spent the first half of my career in rural America. As part of the Obama administration, I ran the Delta Regional Authority as the federal co-chairman. I am a internationally certified economic developer. And the reason I'm telling and sharing that with you all is that I believe in Bogalusa and Washington Parish as an economic asset for the region. Washington Parish generates, yes, it is important. It is a major economic partner for what we do, because you all lend us your talent. You have incredible land assets. We're now in a half connectivity because of thirty-two forty-one. It is important. You are a billion-dollar economy in Washington Parish. The anchor of that economy in Washington Parish is, guess where? Right here in Bogalusa. And what the mayor is trying to do is to make sure that we have an understanding of what that assets are. And what I would lend my voice to is just a simple piece of understanding of retail strategies, because I've worked with retail strategies for many years. I've seen communities of all sizes go through this twelve-month process. And that's a part of this process, Mr. President, is about understanding what your assets are as it relates to the retail sector of your economy. Your economy is composed of about twenty-five percent of retail. In fact, it's the top employer. And when you add retail and food and hospitality and, and the cultural economy, it's literally twenty-five percent of your employment base. Of your ten thousand and so population, you've got about forty-one hundred people that are employed and about less than five hundred businesses in this amazing city with some incredible people and wonderful economic assets. And by letting the city officials and your team that you will put together to go through this, it actually gives you more of an understanding about what is your opportunity to increase economic opportunities in retail. It is a major driver for your economy, that you have a plan. Not only do you know your assets, but you understand how you can capitalize on those assets and turn these places back into commerce. Because with any economic development plan, you have to understand what the strategy is gonna be, what the assets are gonna be. How can we turn these properties and get them back into commerce? There's no magic wand in economic development, there's no silver bullet. You have to create your economic development plan based off your own community, your own landscape. And when you have an asset like retail in Bogalusa and Washington Parish, that's a good place to start. And so I wanted to come here on behalf of the mayor, to the mayor, thank you for his leadership on this front. Thank you for allowing me to partner with so many incredible businesses and community leaders in Bogalusa and Washington Parish, because it is important for the entire region. And the reason that I think it's important that you say yes to this is that I think retail is low-paying fruit. It's an opportunity to put your places back into commerce and create economic activity and jobs. You have an economy that's really built on three major pillars. And retail is one of those, along with healthcare. And then you actually have quite a bit as it relates to ACRI and of course, with I B. But the basis of your economy is what we can build on, and you can do that by the practical steps that this process will take your community through to understand how you can implement creating opportunities for your people moving forward. So I've seen this in real time, I've been a part of this, this is an important part. There are sixteen practice areas in economic development. And retail development is core, particularly in rural Louisiana, in rural America, because it's what's in your community already. And you can build on it, and you've got an amazing base, and now an opportunity to have a better understanding of what that looks like, because Retail Strategies is one of the top retail development, economic development agencies in the country. And I wouldn't say that if I didn't believe it, and I had the experience of working with them, and how they take communities through this process. And I would encourage you as council members to be a part of that. You have, you will have the opportunity as a group, because there will be a group, and the whole group goes through this analysis, because that's where you can have a better understanding and depth of what that looks like and how we are going to implement it. So I wanted to say thank you for the time, Mr. President. I certainly wanted to introduce everybody for Dee, he's here all the time. We're at your service. Thank you for letting me be a partner. Thank you for letting me be a partner, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Before you, before y'all leave, make sure all of y'all leave business cards with us. There's one thing about vendors, we do, actually, sometimes, you know, trying to, after, of course, we vote and everything, but just try to get some clarity about, you know, things. So we do have that kind of thing. Hang on one second, and we'll have a public discussion in just a second. But leave some business cards and all, and I'm a former retailer myself, and for over 20 years. I love my customers, okay? Don't go by what you saw here tonight. There was a store, Dirt Chief, on Main 88, in 2008, that's when we leave the city. They were way down in sales, and with good leadership, coworkers, we turned that store from 800,000 to 2 million. And the city was like, did the taxes off that? Those people love to dig it out, you know, salvage stuff for a while, okay? But they are liquidation business. But I'm just saying, Dirt Chief is still here today, been bought and sold six times in some time.
And that is economic development?
That's what I'm talking about, and it's still here tonight. So, it was quite a deal. But the thing is, that back in the, back in the day, I helped with a cell phone businessman, and, you know, getting it started, it was already here, but we had to go more twice. But the thing is, I appreciate the help that he gives, I haven't seen that in a long time, I really appreciate it.
I'm passionate about job creation. I'm passionate about the Bogalusa and Washington Parish, what I do for a living. I'm proud to be your neighbor in St. Tammany. And we can't be successful in St. Tammany without a partnership and making sure that the entire region is a part of this economic success.
All right, any, any questions?
Right here.
This one?
Three?
It's for everybody. Okay, I was asking, we're going to have to, all right, I want to ask, you know, anything about getting our current businesses. I want, if y'all are ever more, what plan do you have for current businesses in the city?
Yes, so part of the creation of our strategy is to do a lot of limited market research and analysis. And it's going to be at a various granular level, that it's going to allow insights into, for example, how many oranges and apples are being purchased outside of the city by residents? And that can help a local business owner see that there's need to have fresh fruit or other things. We've, you know, seen a lot of examples where someone has a little hardware store. This analysis will help him or her understand that people are spending so many thousand dollars on garden hoses and shuttles outside the city, and it can help them add to their inventory. As well, the analysis is going to help look at the location of where the consumers come from, and get to see that's going to help with marketing, advertising decisions. So part of the Retail Academy is looking at how to attract and recruit businesses, but as Chris was saying, you have to have a viable economy for businesses to come and also. So just adding in another level of how to attract and recruit the right businesses, and as Chris also mentioned, low-hanging fruit, while also supporting in how is that going to help grow the overall commercial base.
And how will they give that information?
How? Do they say, okay.
If your business on the board, how do you keep that information based on our research?
Right, so this is something that, if the city decides to go to Retail Academy, we provide a well-done report, you know, piles like Excel piles, however the community would want to have it. And then, once it's delivered to the city, that is for the city to decide how to distribute it to your local business community. But it is owned by the city, and we always recommend sharing it with the local business leaders, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, working with the other economic development professionals. But it is at the city's access to share with all your business owners.
Counselor, they get that in a lot of different ways. So like, for example, we have space in my office? Thank you. We have access to a lot of proprietary data, right? This is stuff that we track on a regular basis. We have to know what's going on in our economy. But we can do that because we have the resources for an independent economic development organization, that I've got staff expertise on my team that can do this all the time. Whereas here, we can tap into this expertise and leverage that with the expertise of a company like Retail Strategies, because they're doing this all over the country. They know this better than we do. And so they're going to tap in into this. Some information is already publicly provided, but how do you access that? How do you read this? How do you understand it? And how can you translate that to a local business owner to say, hey, your leakage, which is what Lacy was mentioning, this is what we call in our business leakage, you actually have a market opportunity, so if you was to do A, B, and C, you might get increased an opportunity here to bring in more outside money. It's called the trade economy. That's what we try to do in economic development. We want people to spend more money outside of your region in your community. You have the money that circulates in your community, and that's important. That's a healthy part of your economy. But you want to draw more outside money into your community, and this is a strategy that you have.
I do, I do have additional questions, and thank you so much for attending this massive, I see your name a lot in our handouts.
The post office, probably.
With, with Retail Academy, the training, which is not a fee for Bogalusa, as we discussed, is 25, maybe 25,000. My question, I did see where this training may be somewhere else in, in North Carolina. Okay, will it be primarily here in the Bogalusa area for the statistical data that's, that's connected and related?
I'm not sure what you're referring to in North Carolina.
The academy, we're the academy.
Oh, so we are, our office is in Birmingham, Alabama. As our Retail Academy, our ministry, it's also online, virtual training and on-demand training also. But we have been in discussions about opportunities to possibly do this here in the community with the assistance of the St. Tammany Corporation. But that is to be determined.
And also with St. Tammany, there's a number of other municipalities where Retail Academy is established. Would that be a, a, a piggyback, say, from, from St. Tammany versus like different, different types of franchises that could be here in Bogalusa as well as St. Tammany? Or will this be particularly here on Bogalusa?
No, it is the Retail Strategy for Bogalusa. And so, like I said, it's very customized, and it'll be looking back in to all of your existing real estate. Like that is the big piece of this, is doing an examination inventory of all the commercial real estate that is in this city. And then matching that up with the specific businesses that we see are growing that match the demographics, and most importantly, match a site that is here in the city. So it would be 100% of this on Bogalusa.
We didn't need that, we have a public discussion.
Yes, okay.
All right, anybody from the public, all right, sir? Please state your name and address.
Tobias Roberts, 727 Avenue, Virginia. And just wait, would y'all bring it to Bogalusa? Could y'all, is it anything that y'all bring, like for the youth? Would that be incorporated too, like a skating rink or bowling alley or anything? That's, that's all in the gym too?
Good question. This kind of analysis that Retail Strategies does is all that new. So it's all about what could you support? What does the numbers say? What does the research, the analysis say? And if the analysis pops up that, then that could be a viable strategy that they would recommend back to the administration as, heck, here's some opportunities that you can go after. It's hard to tell right now because they haven't done the analysis yet. Does that make sense?
Makes a lot of sense. But yeah, I'm, I'm with everything that y'all have introduced today. And I encourage the council, but this is something that Bogalusa really need. Like, we got a lot of abandoned buildings, if it don't look good, you know? And if they can come in and take care of these buildings and actually bring people in as willing to open these businesses up, you know, that's, we need that. I'm all for anything, I don't care who bring it up. If you for helping the city, then I'm for it. It don't matter who introduces. I don't care if you're white, black, Asian, Chinese, or whatever. If it's going to be up Bogalusa, I encourage the council to vote for it and make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to talk about Retail Strategies.
I have a few questions. Andrew Rice, 74 Pine Range. Just a few questions for you. How much experience does your organization have of working with cities of similar size and especially poverty levels as Bogalusa person?
Yes, so Retail Strategies, we started as an organization in 2011. Almost 14 years. We started Retail Academy in 2016. And it was specifically started as a request from the state of the city to help the rural counties and rural communities. So it was designed to help secondary tertiary rural communities. And so that has always been the focus of Retail Academy. And as I mentioned, it's a very custom process. So it is going to determine what are the opportunities in this city. So no two strategies for any community would look alike. Because the real estate is different. But like I said, it's been 2016, found in by St. Tammany Parish. By St. Tammany Parish, just supported by Bogalusa.
Secondly, is this something that we would, like, is this like an ongoing thing that if everything goes well, we would renew after 12 months?
That is a possibility.
Okay. And then, so I guess with that, I know it's really early, but other than providing insights to current business owners, like, if you had to say, what sort of tangible benefits can the city expect in the next 12 months? It's like, you know, $25,000. How are we to evaluate that unless we have something to expect? If you had?
No, yeah, great question. You know, we cannot guarantee, we can't make a business open the doors. We cannot make a developers do a project in your community. You know, what we do in Retail Academy is break out what your opportunities are, and like I was just saying, how do you capitalize on those? And how do we help you as the city put the right site in front of the right process at the right time with the right message? And so we asked them what are some of the outputs? Is it, it is like I said, a training program, where, you know, the, the council committee, you know, for the city, they're like, this is how you start your following here, and how you're trying to understand what they're asking, and why they're maybe letting their beliefs that they get. And what you can say to a franchisee or someone to try to, try to extend to your city. So there's many deliverables, like we mentioned, the reports and the insights, but really is giving a strategy based on analysis and the specific action plans to, to, like, the low-hanging fruit, like that's our goal, is to kind of, to focus. And say like, here's 10, 15, 20, again, businesses that we know are growing. They're growing, they have a strategy for new stores or for new restaurants in Louisiana. You match the demographics that they're looking for, and most importantly, we found a site within the city that matches what that business is looking for.
Thank you.
Okay? Any other public discussion on Retail Strategies? Please state your name and address for Bogalusa.
Thanks for 1931, you're a place. I have attended different meetings with you all, and I thank you all for hooking up with the mayor, and I thank the mayor for bringing you all here. I think it's a good idea for Bogalusa to get involved with this project. Bogalusa is 75 years behind the times. Y'all don't like to hear me say it, but I see it. It's 75 years behind time. And if this group of people can help bring Bogalusa out of the bottom of the barrel, we need to go forward with this 25,000. Because if the council can't get, get, go on for 25,000, and the previous administration gave up over $400,000, then we ain't getting nothing in return. So look at the big picture. This is true. You can laugh at this, there's not a lot to laugh about. It's true facts.
I'm in agreement with you on that.
It's true facts. So we need to get our head out of the rut and go ahead and get these peoples involved to help Bogalusa and the mayor and this town burn this city forward. If we can't do that, I got a problem with you all. Thank you.
My name is Keith Miller, address is 925 East Forest Street, Department 70. We do need to move Bogalusa forward, and I'm asking the council to please vote in favor of this. Because Bogalusa, contrary to popular belief, we're not in the Mayberry days. Even though we are, but it's not the Mayberry days, so we need to stop acting like this is the Mayberry days. Because people from other places, they come to Bogalusa. I have a family that been other place, they come in, they laugh at Bogalusa. They talk about Bogalusa like a dog. They say, yeah, yeah, but, well, I don't even say it. But it's not good what they say about us. And they say, any young person that stay here, you got to be stupid. And I say, well, I love Bogalusa.
Well, they from here.
They from here.
People that say that?
Yeah, Keith. They from here.
Keith.
Yeah, but they, they see Bogalusa not moving forward. And, and people that go, and you would go off somewhere and then come back, you live in places, and you come back here, and people have a concern. They'll say Bogalusa is not where it should be. But it take go somewhere else to see it, as long as you hear this happening, and not go nowhere else to see nothing, then you think this is normal. So I said, let's walk along with the band, and let's bring Bogalusa forward, and stop reporting back to the good old boys when they have finally eaten this stuff. Go ahead, check it out, we're going to try to block something. Stop being fake and toothfacing, and let's all work together to move Bogalusa forward. It'll not be, you need to get off the council, or we'll get you off the council during the next election. Thank you. You know who they are.
Ready to.
You know who they are.
Why did you say it?
Where are you guys? Discussion.
Excuse me, uh, yeah. I, I would like to say, the Economic Development Committee, with the, the mayor has indicated to me about Retail Strategies. We started to do research on them. We invited them in twice, since the Dee was with us at our first meeting. And Ms. Lacy was kind enough to, to be in our meeting on almost last week, in case she would be back today. Uh, we have thoroughly, I'm not sure how the vote is going to go, but we have thoroughly ensured this. I got Mr. Bailey on our offer funds to see if we have those offer funds available, and hopefully we can get a turnover, a return back, you know, with the offer funds once they are invested in. And as far as lending, I'm not sure as councilwoman does at the gay, who exactly the good old boys are, but this is information that shares to all individuals and all citizens within the city of Bogalusa. And with that being said, if there isn't any other discussion, I can make a motion that we pass this ordinance, and so.
You already made a motion. You made a motion a while ago.
Oh.
All right, now, we know everything about them, so what are they driving? Sorry, any other discussion?
Yes. No, what I was saying is that I did get with our control minister, Mr. Bailey, on the funds being available in our funds. We are a very impoverished city, but from what I understand, we do have, is Mr. Bailey still? Could you confirm that for me, Mr. Bailey? Confirm, confirm that our funds are available for this people in this. Thank you.
And it's also a one-time piece of clarification as well. I can have a question for Ms. Lacy. And thank you, Mr. Bailey, he's always handy when I call him. I appreciate you, Mr. Bailey. Ms. Lacy, I have a question. I know that this particular impact is for 12 months, and we do have staff on-site, the administration, that will train you all. So it's not a given, and it's definitely a great thing, but just say, six, six months in, no one comes. Will y'all be willing to work with the local businesses here? Like I asked you on last week, like, help the local business stay open? Did, if you need to look at going to prices? For example, like I gave you about the clothes situation. For example, like I gave you about the clothes situation, if someone here is selling a shirt for twenty dollars, I can go on my list for ten. Will y'all be willing to work with the local businesses that are already established here to how to, I guess I would say market to bring people who live here in Bogalusa to shop local versus going out to places? So my question is, would you be able to work with the local business?
The way I understand what you're asking, and like I said, the research that we do and all the reporting is going to be available to the city to provide to your local business owners. But I think that working with the local businesses, one of the ones, that's not something that we're able to do. But so part of Retail Academy is also how to talk with the community about shopping local, what that means, what does the impact of sales tax come back into the city? So there will be a lot of education about how do you support your local businesses or local franchises and what that sales tax does come back to the city and how does that benefit the residents.
Okay. So mainly your focus was we need to bring new businesses in and have somewhere for so that we can shop and we can sell. And hopefully like we discuss, like persons get off of work, that the restaurant is still open, hopefully one of the clothing stores should be open for persons who work there and shop.
Right. And so part of our analysis again is going to identify where the city is losing money, right, for other, to other businesses and other communities. And so that is part of the strategy is to help the city stop that leakage that we mentioned. And so how do we help identify businesses where your residents are already spending dollars, but they're not spending in the city?
And as Mr. Bailey said, we're like living back in the doom ages and we're just trying to bring everything up to it.
Right. It's to have a proactive strategy to attract and recruit and also sustain those investment services.
Okay. Thank you.
And also I would like to point, one question I asked last week, with our private property here in the city of Bogalusa, you do have some benchmarks in place that will sit back COVID forces with different types of policies that could possibly help us get a.
Yeah, yes. Part of Retail Academy is providing the city with resources and best practices for current enforcement, aim for working with typical or absentee property owners. And what is there that impact of the property sitting vacant or not in the ties and that's huge? So yes, part of Retail Academy is helping the city understand how to talk to and work with these property owners and in need, look at best practices for policy and then code enforcement.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Smith. Deputy of this for me, Councilman Tate. Yes. Councilman O'Ree.
May. Good to hear.
President Irving.
Yes.
Councilman Decker.
Nate.
So we have a break to two. So. So we have. Rico.
Y'all have their play.
Okay. We have been represented from the charter school here. I want to thank Retail Strategies. All right. Moving on, we're moving to back our regular agenda. The manager will be about to provide financial statements. This is councilman Case.
An ordinance to amend, ordinance now of.
Moving back to our regular.
An ordinance to provide financial statements, resources to Bogalusa City Council Finance Committee on a monthly basis. Since we are so late for time, those financial statements are requested so that we can find out exactly where the funding is in Bogalusa, in the city of Bogalusa. These will be all general fund bank statements to include copies of council checks, credit card statements of all employees and contractors, detailed reconciliation reports for the but a general fund per title, a tariff system, all online statements of payments, detailed expenditure and revenue reports and fund accounts, of controllers approval of five hundred dollars per controller's freeze policy and report on retirement payment and employees of the environment department, police department, and our public works department. And this is, as I said, so that we can, until we get a handle on this stuff, twenty twenty two closeout. And I spoke to Mr. Bailey a little bit about it, he's almost there as far as our particular finances, resources are concerned, but this is what this particular. This particular ordinance is to.
All right, do I have a question? Do I have a question? All right. Public discussion now.
I have something to say. I can.
Administration.
What you and I talked about, the financial statements, are basically what the city has always provided in the past. And that's, well, that's an income statement, which basically tells you revenue and expenditures for every fund. What you're asking for now is, oh my God, I mean, the time and the cost of paper to copy all the reports that you're talking about. That is just ridiculous. Look, I will offer you, I will offer you a desk, you can come down to my office and you can sit in there and I'll give you all the bank statements, all the council checks, I'll give you anything you ask. But I mean, you know, you're asking a lot with all those reports.
So what, what do you think should be excluded? What do you think should be excluded?
Well, I can say, if you can come down and you can ask for it, you just ask for it in my apartment and I'll provide it.
I mean, the city, considering, you know, we have not received financial statements since we came here.
Yes. I thought I had explained that and I'll explain it one more time and I'll try to.
It don't matter, it don't matter. Don't say nothing else.
We gonna do what Bailey did tonight. We gonna storm wall it, veto it, and if you want it, we gonna pay for it like everybody else. Because I continue on in spirit of the wire and the council president just mentioned that, and I would like to say on the record, he is the only one that has worked with us with full faith and effort. Ms. Case, you've been great to deal with too, but the rest of y'all, y'all have to get together, put personal stuff aside, put your local ambitions aside. This makes no sense to be sitting here for hours upon hours and leading to three steps back on everything that we have discussed. That's pathetic. I'm embarrassed for us. Y'all can't even make decisions on the ordinance, but always got a opinion on how we run the city. I'm sick of it. And if we gonna play that game, we'll go back to the old way politics that we were playing up in here. You do your thing, you're going through our bidding, that's hurting the citizens, you are not hurting me. Anytime you take a no vote and you make a smurf, that's not hurting me, you not hurting me? You are hurting the citizens that y'all fight to love. You don't care about citizens, you don't care about these pants. We want to talk about poverty and all this other stuff, but anytime we host and sell and put resources back in the community, y'all know where to be found. Please miss me with that. I came in here and I said I'm gonna become a cordial collector of roses in that outcome, but this is stupid. Y'all need to do better, do better.
Well, I do want to respond to that very much. I'm really upset, you know, about it too, because we haven't seen no financial statements period this year. So honestly and truthfully, all these ideas are great, but you're asking us to go on stuff and we don't know how much money we have at all. This is two thousand twenty-four, we don't know, we haven't had an audit, and all we asking for financial statements, and this lady done worked her hardest together, as you saw, we prepared. And now Mr. Bailey is saying it's too much to ask for because we don't know numbers. And how do we expect to go on new spending? We passed a budget already, so we got money for the budget, now this new spending, and we don't know what money we have available to spend. We have.
That's not new spending, it's allocated when you pass the budget, Mr. Council. It's allocated. We just discussed eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in offer funds, and we just got twenty-five thousand. What are you doing? You don't.
You're saying a lot.
That's not an excuse you don't use.
We have seen it. You're saying it, you said a lot, we have seen them now. All we asking for is financial statements, and we have yet to give one. That's all we asking for. That's not even relative to what we're trying to pass, if we could say four with twenty-four thousand dollars. Yeah, really. So I'm gonna be right, and I will, we got it, I got it, I got the order.
So Ms. Case just mentioned that she confirmed that we have.
You know we got this statement, you seen it?
I just told you, we have elevated nine thousand dollars in the offer. And I'm telling you this, something is not done, we lost it.
Okay, so I listen again, we've been asking, it's sad, we have to write a warrant, so just to get a financial statement, we're councilmen, we're asking to go on these financials, and we don't even have no financials, period. And we're gonna take everybody's word every time and then some come have to throw us in the bus, because we don't have financial statements. How hard is this to say, we spent this much this month, we brought in this month, but how hard is it to just get one? We don't know if we're paying for it or not. That's my reservation. And I said it repeatedly, we're in uncharted territory, two years no audits, we don't have no financial statement, and the council asks for open audits, and we don't know what the loans look like.
Let me say this, financial meetings, Mr. Mark and Gloria, these meetings that we've had, have I not told you why you have not been provided the statements so far?
I can argue this case, if y'all got one shit, you know what I'm saying?
If I may, the last, the last line actually that we had this past Thursday, I did read a clause and I put that indicated that we will not receive an audit until the two thousand twenty-two closeout is done. Now, I must say, I did send everyone a copy of the offer statement, had to be like maybe two, three weeks ago, but as far as other statements, no, we have not received, but the offer statements, which was addressed tonight with retail strategies, those funds were in. In fact, we discussed the offer statements also this past Thursday, and it was indicated the amount that we had available with our offer funds. And what was the amount, Mr. Bailey, with our offer?
Yes, the same amount that we got. Ms. Case, what I'm talking about is, is what have I told you guys in the last two or three financial meetings, why you haven't received those statements? And I'll say it one more time for the public to hear.
No, it's not because we did not receive statements, it's true.
I found errors in those statements that hadn't been corrected. I could not present those statements to you from what I was looking at. Now, I told you at the last financial committee meeting, that if I showed you a financial statement two months ago, you'd look at four and a half million dollar.
The deficit, yeah, you told me.
Four and a half million dollar. I couldn't do that because it was not a trick.
You said it.
The fact, there was some things wrong, I had it correct, and I told you, I'm right at the edge of being corrected, and I promise you, probably will in the next two weeks, you'll have a, and matter of fact, yeah, I promise you, you'll have a financial statement that'll be through August. Okay, this will be mid-September. And that's, that's basically, you should really get a financial report about two weeks after the month is closed. I've got, I've got just about that wound up and it's okay. And I know, I wanted to say something about, somebody on Facebook made a comment running their mouth about a four and a half million dollar deficit. And they took, they took that, tell them all the context, because what I just told you is what I, they didn't listen to. They took, the bottom line is, I told y'all, you would have had a four and a half million dollar deficit if I'd showed it to you two months ago, well, I was there again. Okay, but I can tell you right now that, right after that, I knocked it way down. And it was really not a deficit, it was, my finance department did not realize that I had funds budgeted for other funds to come into the general fund to take up that slack. I mean, you guys, if you know anything about the budget, you know every year that we budget awesome, close to two billion dollars out of the utility fund. You know also that we, we use about a million, a million five or a million six out of employee raise fund. You see, they forgot or didn't know to move those funds to cover those deficits. Okay? So when I present you a financial statement, it's gonna be one that I can explain to you and you'll understand. If I show you a four and a half million dollar deficit, it's a four and a half million dollar deficit. That's not what I showed you. Please don't invite anybody to walk out here and say that I said that you have a four and a half million dollar deficit.
These are not only the statements, Mr. Bailey, but the credit card, the credit card statements, that's different from financial statements, the detailed reconciliation reports, the statements, the all online statements, detailed expenditure and revenue reports, and a list of, you know, you have a freeze in as well, a five hundred dollars, the listing of five hundred dollar freeze.
You know, I welcome any and all of you to come down to my office, you asked for the report and I'll show it to you. You asked me for a report a few weeks ago that I, and you told me that a former employee of the city gave you that report, and I can't find that report anyway, I don't know where you, where that.
Okay, could you repeat that? A former employee gave, gave me?
Yeah, you told me that the former director of administration gave you a report.
No, I never said that.
Well, I asked you to show it to me.
I never said that in this fair.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
No.
I think to simplify this, and I don't know what my drapery here, but to simplify this, the all, from all the majors all the way back, and I sent in on some of the media support and the ones that were the previous thing, for what y'all say about the previous administration and everything, they provided the income, the balance sheets, and their expenditure reports. And I know it was about sixty days behind, because you have a tremendous amount of work. People don't understand that, doing the financials now, okay? And they also provided us with credit card statements. So, but the thing is that we didn't have to do all this, that's what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to, I just simplified it, I don't know what else was on that big chart of this, but I don't have a memorize, I read through it, I don't have a memorize.
That's the point, that's the very.
But my point is, if you provide the basics stuff, that's a guidance, navigate us through how do we guide from one number to another, that would be excellent. that would be excellent.
Well, give an example, because you talked about a credit card statement. Okay, what would you expect? Have you ever seen a credit card statement? I mean, you, you got a credit card, don't you?
Yes, I have.
Sometimes they memorize. Now, I don't know, I don't even know how many credit cards in the city. I don't have that to, the amount is, is somebody's got to put that together in a, in a, in a shop. Somewhere, you may not even accept. I don't know if you believe me, so you may want to see every, every detail of everything. But I'm still telling you what you're asking for, for a lot. I mean, do you realize how thick the general fund, bank statement is all? I mean, the checks, the checks that have been written, it's about that big.
I'm serious. For one month, when I asked you about this paper, and maybe talking about some stuff that was going on here, part of the joint. All I'm saying is, I still, I have seen it. I have a problem with any kind of cities trying to do a move forward, but we have to be responsible, and we have to be real, right? So we don't know what the money is up by. We just don't. We have not received no financials, period. Period. Now, come on, nobody's ever seen one, and I'll sit on the other side, how hard is to say, hey, it's how much we spent? So much we brought in. That's all I was asking for. Now, I have a problem with this thing if I don't have the money for it. I have a problem with the vote on it and bring it back up and go back with it. I just don't. Tell me that. Now, this is black, white, this ain't telling me. This is black and white. I don't choose. We don't have no statements to prove it.
Mr. Stacey, if you heard that you not just say that you gave them an Arbo statement about a month ago, yes or no?
Yes. I did.
There's another thing. I don't think y'all listened to the financial committee. They asked me if we have the money, and I told them, yes, we have the money. They don't tell y'all.
And we do listen to the finance committee, and I do try to attend some of the meetings. However, I'm not here to micromanage the budget, because my job as a councilwoman, but I am here to make sure that the money should be there before I vote on anything, because I'm just here voting gay or male for the benefit of the city and for the side noise that I hear over here. Once again, and I'll state for the record, I wasn't referring to a disability as a handicap. I was referring to every time I talked to a certain person, excuse me, I'm talking. I was referring to, for clarification for the record, I was referring to every time I talked to a certain person, they called me back and they said, well, I couldn't remember. I couldn't forget. You know, I got a disability. And Michelle Orin, they could vouch to that. She can get up here and come testify to that, that we're always being told, I can't remember, I have a disability. I don't remember I said that. Please forgive me. I'm sorry. So however, I'm not against any fees. I am against, and I'm not gonna vote for anybody to have to pay a fee for practice. I do believe the city does need to be collecting money, because other places are doing it, and it's just the way that we have to be able to get money is by collecting funds. I understand that. Y'all get up here all the time. This needs to be prepared. This needs to be done. I haven't heard anybody complain about the courts. However, we do have to collect revenue. I'm not against collecting any revenue. I work hard for this position. I work hard to get, and I work hard to succeed. I'm not against the city collecting money at all. I'm a taxpayer. I don't live people free, and I don't live in any government supplement housing. I pay tax, okay? So, once again, I'm gonna say, Tamira Smith is not here to micromanage anything. But as a taxpayer, and as your councilwoman at large, we do have to oversee that things are being placed here. And like I said, I would gladly support any new business coming here and anyone that has the expertise and how to bring businesses here to our local town, because I'm gonna spend so much in town, and I'm gonna spend so much out of town. I already spent everything in town. I'm not against no business being here. So for the side noise, y'all can clap your hands on that door, because you're not being productive. You're growing the act of this, and I'm really sick of it.
All right, Mr. Farrell, please say your name.
Thank you, Colonel, ladies and gentlemen, D.B. I am sick of all of this. This is not coming here to change Bogalusa to a double Bogalusa. Look, already you saying you been trying to get the record for two years. We don't lie. You just been here a couple months. Scott Land. Scott Land. Scott Land. You be out here, what you say? You would put here, you would put here, you would put here the whole of that back. You would put here the whole of that back. That's what I'm saying. You would put here that whole of the map back. The girl on that back there. And Kenny, I say the same thing with you. Anybody that comes says, no, that Bogalusa needs to be, this thing needs to be voted on and have Bogalusa.
We always talk about Bogalusa. Bogalusa looks just like Bogalusa.
No, he don't.
And two kids. And him gonna talk about how bad he is. No, shut you back.
Shut it down.
Shut you back.
Shut it down.
I said all this. Every week, someone here.
Shut it down.
Listen, Scott, are you all gonna vote with us or not?
Listen, let's stop right there. We've been here almost four hours.
Yeah.
Come on, Matt. Let's move it along. Say what you gotta say. Forty minutes of the is not.
Emperor, 1634, fine, thanks. Back to the actual resolution at hand. I heard a lot of things from Mr. Bailey. One of the other things, one of the main things, a few of the main things I heard was talking about moving money, a four and a half million dollar deficit in error, 100% in error, sir, that we're still working on rectifying this, reducing this. Don't know how many credit cards are in the city. I think you said a lot of things that justify 100% what you're proposing. Like, this is not the mayor's wallet. This is not the council's wallet. This wallet is made up of the people's money. And if they can't provide to you guys a justification for where this money's being spent, how it's being spent, where it's going, and if we're still having confusion regarding deficits, and we're not caught up to where we're at, then I absolutely support, you know, not spending money. And I think asking of a city to prove where the money is going to the people that represent the taxpayers is not unreasonable requesting. That's a normal request, and I commend you guys for asking. I strongly urge you to pass this. Even if it is gonna get vetoed, the citizens deserve this. Thank you.
For sure. And before the next person comes along to clarify something, no one showed us in black and white, there's a four million dollar deficit. I just want to give the administration the credit on that, because I haven't seen it yet. So, this is for, this is for my grandpa.
My daughter, Renee Day, 826 East, South Street, Bogalusa, Louisiana. Now, y'all, I get up here, it's time for us to come together and unity. We can be back and forth. I'm tired of coming up here here and obvious. We supposed to be up here for the city, didn't we? Now, I can say this to you, but I, we had a day of action here in Bogalusa. These peoples right here. I'm gonna turn around for everybody to see. Equal Justice, USA. They came here and they been here a whole year. I personally, am I right or wrong, Mr. Bailey? Invite me every council board person and everything. Am I right? Everybody should have been at Bogalusa on a person, and I know y'all have basically different thing. Ms. Gloria Case is there. Thank you, Ms. Gloria. I'm here with them. They have some information now. I have a look in my purse, so how can I see back on track? These people are here a whole year, but what we do, we need to fight. It's time to stop. I'm tired of hearing the good old boy thing, the good old boy thing. It's time to stop all of this shit. And just because, but I'm tired of it. Y'all can break this for no reason. And happy y'all in here is a number. Safety. Stop it now. We got a city to govern. We got a city to govern. You can get up here with the quiet, the things and stuff. This time not today. That's not the long time. Whatever you want to do up here, let me tell y'all something. A lot of things I do on my own, and everybody know in the city. But I'm glad you come to join. We must stop tonight. It's time to be fair. Everybody right now. Oh, I raised this up. Everybody looking at the city of Bogalusa, but we had these people right here. They come to here, walking here and bringing money to the city. I'm not gonna let you show off. But the ones that even come, I thank you, because Bogalusa showed up and showed back. So, now the end of the day, with all these people in order, the only thing that I say to the minister and the council board is, these people don't get up here, they may not get up here and stuff, but at the end of the day, the mayor is responsible for the city. The council board is responsible for the city. I'm not asking y'all, but work together. That's what, that's what people wanna see. It's like a change now. It has to change starting tonight. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. We're not gonna be there. We can agree, we can still agree, but we also want to be mad with each other. Let's come together and have a seat.
Thank you.
11/27 to 5/11, 11/27 every day. It's just the bottom line is, the administration and the council gotta work together. The administration gotta provide the council what they need to push the city forward. It got to go both ways. It can't be that the council don't know what funds we spend, but we still spending money. They got to feel comfortable on what's going on. Yeah, I went in the past with them, threw them $25,000, but guess what? I'm not sitting in the financial meeting. I don't know that there hasn't been no documentation, you know, presented to the council since when they are. And Mr. Bailey, you gonna come up here like I said to them, tell the truth about stuff. Quit just saying stuff that ain't true. The man said he act since April. That's not two years ago that he been trying to get that. He didn't say that. You keep coming up here saying things that ain't true. Real things don't lie. They tell the truth. Politicians lie. So you a politician. You a key mayor of y'all politicians. That's what I see. Okay, it's been seen, but at the same time, the council need, we need to know what we're spending. We need to know what we have with money. That is no asking for too much. That's basic principles of running the city. And if you ain't willing to provide the council what they need, then say no. Keep saying no. I'm here for Bogalusa. I ain't here for the mayor. I ain't here for the council. I'm here for Bogalusa. And if some people don't understand that, what you here for? The good old boy system gotta be what y'all run. Gotta be. What y'all think? The good old boy system gonna work on the one common person? No. A good old boy system gonna be on by anybody. It's just been passed to another administration. The good old boy system right over there. Since you wanted to keep talking about the good old boy system, get out of here. That what you need to do. Get stay home. Anyway, council, y'all do y'all job. I'm counting on y'all. I'm counting on everybody to do their job at Bogalusa. Meaning, provide the financial statements, so we can know what's going on. That's part of the job. Do what's right by the city. That's all I care about. Thank you.
All right, anybody else want to speak on the financial statement?
My name is Keith, Mayor. My address is 925 East Fourth Street, Department Center. You gonna ask for a financial statement? That's fine, but you didn't ask for it for a financial statement. And myself, man, people, you have to be minded anyway, if you don't know what the good old boy system is about. About, how about you can go back and take, uh, we've had a history. Because anybody that have any kind of education knows the good old boy system is. Talking about being a good old boy system. I'm being a good old boy system. We ain't got no money. The good old boy system consists of people that's got money that control a thing. I don't have no money that control nobody up here. So you can get up here, make sure you pass history, so you can know what's going on. You up here, I talk about the good old boy. I can break it down. I can dumb a whole word. And like I said, yeah, y'all been bought by the good old horse. And y'all sit up here, and y'all look stupid, like y'all don't know what somebody talking about. But we need to get all y'all off the couch from election time. And people that's got businesses, we need to boycott their businesses. They can't sit up here and do what's right for us. And start working for the doggone G phones. I say, everybody.
I know the warning, Keith. There gonna be a lawsuit by Keith's own. You're right. And I mentioned, nobody's had a, you're a G go. God, you have heard in this speech, that lawsuit goes to you, not the city. Just warning you, and I mentioned, nobody's had. We've been in a tremendous amount of lawsuits up here, and we know how to, we know how to. Those lawsuits put them teaches.
And Mr. Renee Day stepped out, but I did attend, um, I did attend some of the meetings. I did attend some of the meetings, however, I didn't make it to the end. Mr. Renee Day went out, but I did attend, um, they had two meetings at Bethlehem, and they also had a meeting at Legends for equal justice. And I wasn't attended in those meetings. However, for the record, I did not attend the last meeting, because I had to work that I did witness. Michelle know what I was doing, because she and I met afterwards. So I just do want the citizens to know that I do participate as often as I can. Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the public room to speak about this particular event? All right, if not, we're closing it up. Council discussion.
I did want to say, I don't have my beat.
I just sent, I just sent you something.
I'm saying, but when we talking about Mexico, I didn't check their beat out after you. I don't have my own.
I just sent you when we got it.
Okay.
In June, we got the Arbo funds report.
All right, moving along.
I just want to say something for Ali. We're a year and a half. We've busted our ass, and we had to try to clean up our asses. I've been here through all the other administrations, but this ain't about the other administrations. This is about us moving forward, and we have deadlock here. We can't move forward in this town. We can't do nothing positive. And that's all we were trying to do is go positive. Twenty-four thousand dollars, I think we definitely might have that. And then this case asked, do we have that? Oh, well, definitely. So then it gets to something else that seems more vindictive, because we don't get the full votes. Everybody, most of y'all wanted to vote for this, because it's why? It's a no winner. It's positive. I mean, this makes Bogalusa come out of the sadness.
Mr. Farrell, get the information from our vote on. I just don't have it.
Well, he said, you go right down to the front. I'm not giving a technical experience over this, so I'm just letting you know. We're making our best effort, best effort.
Can I make a comment, can I make a comment, uh, Mr. Bailey? Normally, these particular, these particular documents is requested through our public records requests. Ms. Pittman, Ms. Pittman has sent us this information before, as I received information out of shared with the council. The credit card statements, the, uh, the, uh, well, she, well, I had gotten an online statement from her, but the expenditure and revenue reports, we didn't go since before the other ladies of us in Virginia had left. Uh, the, uh, and we just recently started to request you about the over $500 per control of the freeze policy, which we asked for that before through public records requests, but we have not received that. We haven't received that information that, and the, um... the requirement, the, uh, retirement, uh, payments, uh, with that, that information back through public records request. With this information, this is information is requested. Uh, whereas a public records request will not have to be done. You know, but otherwise, you know, that's how, uh, this information has been, uh, given to us through public records request. And yes, it's taken her some time, Ms., Ms. uh, Pittman, to get this information back to us. You know, but with this particular, uh, ordinance, it has us to, uh, have this information without doing a public, uh, record request. And that's primarily why.
I, I, I have no problem with you asking for reports. And I have offered them to you. You can come down. I, I, I'm gonna make one amendment to it. I'm not gonna let you do it in my office. But I promise you, I'll find you a desk down there. Where you can come and you ask for that particular report. Of what, whatever information you're looking for, I'll provide it for you. That's, and I'm fixing, and I told you again, that in two weeks, uh, before or on August fifteenth, I will have the, uh, uh, an income statement, which will give you in every month. It'll show you revenue and expenditures. If there's any other kind of, uh, things that you want, I'll, I'll provide it for you. I, I don't know, uh, uh, you, you're with the finance committee, committee, and, and we, we getting along pretty good, I think. Don't, don't you? And, and I'm, I tried to provide whatever information you want, I will provide it. And, and that's my promise to you. But I, but I mean, I, I mean, uh, you're putting a lot, with all those reports that you mentioned, that, that is a lot that's, that's gonna take. Not only me, but I've got to go to accounts payroll. I got to go to, to, you know, other people to get payroll. I gotta get all this information and put it together. And you, you know, the law on your replies that we show you what we have. But see, we got the information you're asking for. I would have to sit down and actually do a report. I mean, for example, if you wanna look, again, I'll go back to that same example on credit cards. You're, you're better off if you come and you look at the credit card statements yourself. Rather than me have to pull them out, give you a summary or even detail. You realize how much time that'll take for me to do all that?
We, yes. We, we have, we have received those reports.
And then we cannot let, allow with this documentation, leaving them to the premises twenty-five. I mean, you can't take the original, you can't go back.
Oh, we never have. We never expect you to do it with.
Now, hey, Mr. Bailey, is there any way that you could get with Mr. O'Reilly and, 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 and give them what they need? So we can get this development going on at least, for we, yeah, for we can do this twenty-five thousand. To give them the old line, that they can come in.
Here's your problem. What more does it take? I sat here, I, I told them, ask me tonight.
But you keep saying you told them. Show them in black and white. It's not about people lying. It's too many lies. But I ain't saying you a liar, but I'm calling you a liar. Cause I never know, so I use personally to lie. You hear me? So I would never say it. But my thing is, show them. Just put it in black and white. Show them black and white so that you are helping the city. You're not doing it for you. You're not doing it for what you need for them. See, this. You right. You right. You, you absolutely right. Cause we need to visit that need.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm gonna go on to right now.
I'm just saying. So we, please, y'all don't give up on this. I'm on y'all side, y'all is my lead. We still have. We gonna get it done. I, I'm for real. We still have. Okay. We got doing it. We got plenty of controversial ordinance. Our city history is being made as the longest council that we ever had in a hundred years. So, alright, then. But there's a lot of potential. But, but I thank you for your comments. Now, details strategy, what we're gonna do on that. We can look at, we gotta gather all the things. They already know I'm a war bug. They know I know that. I, I'm from retail. I, I, I heard the, they were singing my, for my end. Okay? I'm just using that for example. Okay? And I understand, I understand where they were coming from. But what, what tells a people has to do is got to get proof in black and white backup to show that they have the money sitting in ARPA. That twenty-five thousand dollars in ARPA. Then they will be able to word off something. Right. So, so bottom lines. I would, uh, we're gonna have to explore the legalities of this first. Okay? Let me not go in there. I would hang in there with this. Don't, don't get mad at not do. Just listen. At least, at least.
I mean, uh, is, uh, is Attorney Maggie here? Attorney Maggie. We, we, we have orders on this particular ordinance. Would that be, what legality do we have? Would, to, to backtrack and table this and come back to it?
We have voted, right? No.
It's introduced.
Yeah, that's been voted on, but don't, let's not get in the legal wranglings. Explore this. I know we're way of doing it, but we have to explore it first. I don't wanna make a comment.
I was speaking about the one for the financial.
I'm saying, right.
Yeah, we're talking about financials. Let's go back to financials.
To just give financial statements for expenses and revenue. We got a problem, pick my question this case. And maybe you can put something in and request to get additional information.
Well, I just made, okay, wait, wait, I make a motion to, let's table Mr. Bailey. On the financial statements. What did he say?
I'm, I'm saying, and I, I, I will move it to you. Keep the credit.
We'll come back and I'll send you that.
We're apparently gonna take it. So we didn't have a motion to second. But what? We all, on condos and E-codes, like he saying, we're really need to say credit card. Credit card statements.
Yeah, we don't have it.
If a sucker were, you got additional information, you know, requesting. So you get a little chance to get it on.
But, alright. Let's go ahead and have our comments. On the title of this particular ordinance.
Before I vote, just wanna, um, get some clarification that we are tabling this. And this case was requesting this information because she is the, um, the chairman finance, yeah, the chairman over the finance committee. And she's just trying to make sure everything was together and legit. And as Mr. Bailey say, I don't think he would just be pulling rabbits, um, out of hats. You know, having us to pass ordinance that pertains to money, spending of the citizens' tax dollars on things that we did not have. Just for clarification, Mr. Bailey, I do trust your word. Um, so I.
Councilwoman O'Reilly.
Alright.
President Irving.
Aye.
Councilwoman Del.
Alright, that motion will be tabled.
Until next time.
Yeah, okay. Alright. So next one, we have an ordinance, uh, Councilwoman Smith involving mobile food, uh, trucks.
In order Serena, section ten eighty-four, the city of Bogalusa codes provide the operation of mobile food establishments, food trucks or food trailers within the city of Bogalusa. Um, we already had on the record for food, um, trucks. However, did write the ordinance, um, to pertain to food trailers. Um, we did, um, change the amount. Um, it's just to connect revenue for the, um, the city, of course. And the trailers do have a different, um, amount they will have to pay that's taken from the food trucks. Also, just a way to be known that, um, doing this established business hours, food trucks or trailers cannot be within five hundred feet of, um, established food restaurant that's already up and running.
Okay, could you give the amount?
Well, I wanna say I contest around from the law, but I'm trying to find it. Eight hundred dollars for food trucks and fifteen hundred that I wrote for food trucks. Being the fact that a food truck will be more costly for its maintenance versus a food truck.
So eighty hundred for a truck?
Yes.
And fifteen hundred for a trailer?
Yes.
Now, per year?
Per year. Per year with a two hundred and fifty dollar application fee for all. Um, so we'll have to, with non-negotiable back to the city. And to make sure for the record, no vendor may sell alcohol beverages, um, from the food truck or truck.
Okay, let's go ahead and have a, I'm gonna make a motion on that. And I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second. Now the doors open for public discussion on this. Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
To five eleven, seven, eleven, New Jersey. I just was gonna say, uh, I hope it passes, you know what I'm saying? That's something that can bring revenue to the city and, you know, like I said, um, trucks and trailers, you know, we need that. That's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Alright, next, Mayor. Uh, we are discussing the, uh, mobile food truck trailer ordinance.
Hello, Mrs. Daniel, six zero three two two P. Children Road. Um, I'm trying to wow, hit this going, uh, the business going. I, I moved to Bogalusa, pretty excited about that. I'm gonna start a new life here from New York. Anyway, um, to the point is that I don't understand the difference between you're basically hiring a truck and a trailer. It costs even more so for me to pull a trailer, in my opinion. I, I chose a trailer due to if I'm pulling a trailer and my truck goes down, I saw the trailer go on a truck. It makes sense to me. If I drive it, my, my business and the thing goes down, I'm not in good luck there at all. I also don't understand the difference if be a fifteen hundred versus eight hundred. I feel like there's, I don't like using this word, but somewhat of a contrast there to a food trailer versus a truck. And I just don't understand in what that someone could explain to me.
I definitely would. Uh, and part of it, you just explained yourself and Susan, um, you just stated that if you had a food trailer, um, you're able to remove, detach your truck and your food truck is still available. However, food truck, if it breaks down, whatever, that business is out of business until that food truck gets fixed. So that's one of the reasons why. Another reason why when I, um, went back and made some calls on inventory, for instance, when you have, um, just say a festival going on and you pay fifty dollars, for example, to set up and, um, sell at that festival versus a food truck in the past, um, on sales tax dollars, the trailers that come in to whatever event that's going on in the city, they paid the person that fee, but no revenue of sale tax was collected out of the sheriff's department. So that's another thing that we take into consideration as well.
I don't understand what you're saying. I mean, if you're saying I pay a different tax due to having a trailer versus a truck?
No, you won't pay a different tax, but when you actually collect and turn your sales taxes in. That was another thing that we actually looked at.
As far as that was concerned, you're saying in the end, if you ran anyone or report my taxes, you think I'll get more back because I have a trailer? Is that what you're saying?
You'll, you'll have more revenue than a food truck is what we were looking at.
Why? Due to size or what? How's that figured out?
Well, due to sizes, one, most food travelers, trailers will have two to three persons versus a food truck. It's a little bigger in the inside and it does require a little bit more maintenance than a food truck. And you stated it yourself. Once a food trailer is, um, the truck isn't working, but you can still sell out of your trailer versus a food truck. If it breaks down, they're out of business.
But why would I? I see what you're saying. Cause I, I said it myself.
Another thing too, to make account affair across the board, cause we did discuss this. I can possibly go purchase a food trailer twelve thousand dollars, just quoting out, versus a food truck twenty-five thousand. So you have to look into the whole big picture, um, versus the food truck and the food truck, which we're welcoming and welcoming like above to come. It's just the expenditures of the truck versus the trailer. You know, because you own a trailer, it's cheaper than a food truck. Cause I know when you didn't purchase a food truck, you purchased a food truck.
Okay, um, this is completely incorrect.
And that's just, that's just from my belt that I.
Okay, yours for second. Yeah, Scott, I am.
Right, this is a separate.
Yeah, this is completely incorrect. The pickup truck that you pulled that trailer with, where's the maintenance on that? How's that any different than your, there, there? If my pickup goes down, I'm down. But I have the ability, I can go rent something else. The food trailer is actually worth spending than the truck. And the truck, if you look at it, they're trashy. They look like cockroach. How many times have we already called them? Roach coaches.
That's right.
That's what they're called. Go look in my trailer. I promise you, it is one of the cleanest places you will ever see. That one right there, she claims it religiously. You have the maintenance on the pickup. You have the maintenance on your trailer. There's no difference here. That truck can pull just the same place that trailer can pull. I paid thirty-five thousand dollars for that food trailer. So telling me that I can go get a food truck for twenty thousand, which I've seen it for anywhere from twelve to thirty thousand dollars for the food trucks. We chose a trailer because, you know, I wanna be able to rent a truck. If my thing goes down, I still have that extension. It's not like it's any cheaper for me to rent a truck or a trailer. It makes no sense whatsoever. If you wanna make them, put them equal. If you want the trailer to be the same thing, do the same thing as a truck. They are no difference. Both of them have several roads. Both of them get pulled. If I, my truck's working, I can't pull that trailer. If that truck breaks down for the food truck, it can't pull, right? So there's not really a difference. You, the cost sequences, it's not a cost series. If it's anything, the truck is cheaper. And another issue maybe is constantly easy to look at is some of the people that just go around selling and vending on there. I mean, the, the city is at a viability there. The mayor puts on an event, closes down businesses for people to go set up in front of other people's businesses. They close down. These people come in there with no food permits, no safety, anything, selling there. And they're able to do this. But we try to do it the right way. Get our safety permits, get health permits, get inspections, run everything the right way, and we're shut down. But they come in here with a little food trailer, little trailer with a, say a boiling set or a barbecue pit and so, all day long with no issue. You never have to buy a permit, they don't do anything. As far as taxes go, we have a sales system, a POS system, that does for every county that we're in. And I have a sales report where I pay sales tax for the state and for the county government. So you program it for everywhere you go. And it's mobile, so whenever you go to a different place, it goes there. So I have a detailed report of everything that gets made, every county, and they get their sales tax. So the points made for trying to separate the food trucks to trailers, uh, really are used.
And thank you, Mr. Scott. And I did have the pleasure of, um, Ms., um, Susan. She did allow me to, um, actually come on a trailer. It was nice and clean. Fellow council, um, makes deny, we did come to that conclusion for the prices due to the fact that, um, the cost of maintenance, the cost of purchasing one against the other, as well as it is absent the president at the time, Mr. Candy Kelly. We look back and pay the sales taxes, like you said, your system is set up. However, we do know, and we have heard, not throwing anybody under the table, that they come in, they, um, they sell, they do whatever, and soon they're back out of town. They're back. They're back. Right, they're back, they're back. So we were thinking if we can, um, and the reason for this partness that I put together along with the fellow council mates is to get our money on top. Because we do know that y'all come in, bam, you sell and you're gone. Bogalusa's benefiting for that. We're not getting revenue. Y'all just coming through, doing whatever. And I mean, y'all as in you, because I met you and I know you're doing. because I met you and I know you're doing things that was right. And I do like the fact that she did employ young kids to come help. That way they're able in the summer to make money. So kudos to that, and I appreciate that, but we did take into consideration the truck versus this.
The choices.
The choices that we made, and then we did get online and went to several prices, I myself, um, missed case, um, we started looking online versus old versus new, and the trucks do cost way more than the trailers.
All right, so it's choice. Listen, you're talking to a student here, never had a food trailer, food truck, by fricking sitting and planning this on the means for two years and dealt with this. I suggest we go back to charging the same fee, because that food truck was modified to, from fifteen hundred to eight hundred originally. And I'll tell you why it was done that way, is because it wasn't collecting water fees, okay? You are not collecting property taxes, stuff like that. And that's why that fifteen hundred dollars annual fee was set up that way, because your fricking border is paying that.
And you and I discussed this, and we can go back and forth all day, but you even came to the conclusion and to find the conclusion that it was okay on the prices, because um we do know that persons will go out and purchase a same trailer versus a food truck. And that was the last thing we agreed upon.
Yes, they looked at that.
And if you go around town and you survey the persons, they have more persons here in town that own the trailer than they do versus a food truck. And we're here to make sure the trailer's fast and we collect revenue.
When this thing, when this food, food truck, when it was changed a year ago to eight hundred bucks, no one lined up to buy it, because it's an enclosed motor coach. You buy that thing, you're you're out of business if it breaks down.
Okay, versus a truck.
Food trailer, food trailer, you can pull behind your vehicle and go get another truck to pull that thing. And 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 everything else.
My point is that, so that's the other revenue thing.
In the city of Hammond, they don't, in these other municipalities, they just, they just say, okay, I hear the word, mobile food vendor, and charge them all the same thing. That's why, I'm just telling you, I can go look up their ordinance.
A lead grant, one ten grant, right?
Oh, we'll be checking midnight, so.
No, 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 I'm trying to do technical again. Am I correct that we have some council personnel who would be involved with this ordinance as far as all new trailers and trucks?
Yes, and we know.
And this is the largest.
Yes, and I'm going, even though me and this are already, we're the same.
I own a truck, a food truck, I sold.
Okay, the reason I ask this is because right now you have five members present, you should stay, you should never vote on something that doesn't.
And I definitely am, I I introduce it, and I definitely gonna abstain for it, because I don't want nobody think I'm being biased against this, this, or that. My job as a councilwoman is to help try to bring revenue in, and trailers was not on there.
And when you're a judge, you're supposed to state what your conflict might be and that you cannot vote for.
Yes, I'm gonna do that, it was time to vote.
And I stepped forward, and because of the two of y'all, that I'm gonna leave three devoted could pass, that's why.
Right, yes, ma'am, we are, we are better.
So why you say we should be, we should have planned?
Right.
But do you fit up with the ordinance?
I'm gonna abstain, because I don't want it to be a compromise of any, of any.
To buy a lot of that, three seven, that, that. I think it should be a compromise when it comes to the food trucks and the food trailers. I think they should be the same price. If you would just bring that a thousand dollars for both, that'll meet your halfway on your fifteen hundred, because you know what I'm saying? You don't lose as much in that compensation, you know what I'm saying? Then everybody's um, fair playing round. If you choose to buy a food truck and it costs more in your maintenance, then that's on you, I'm just saying. So don't, I would put it in perspective that if this one costs more than that, because you can have that food truck, and they got that trailer, and you might not sell nothing in that food truck, because your food might not be good versus the trailer, they might not sell that, because it might not be good. I'm just saying.
It's just like the cost of the van, and you can go to Walmart, and you can buy this shirt for ten dollars, you can go to Sam's, buy a shirt for five dollars.
What what he's proposing is split their license, right, center, and a thousand dollars.
At football, across the board.
Because you're gonna, that whole lady down there that does our occupational license, we're gonna have her dog confused, okay?
No, she's definitely not gonna be confused.
Let's see, let's see.
That right now is show up.
Excuse me, the poor lady that you mentioned down there is definitely not gonna be confused, because she has an ordinance, and she's gonna know how to deal. She already made one mistake, and she apologized, so we don't continue to make mistakes.
I'm just uh.
However, Mr. Rogers has spoken, he's just saying that to compromise between the both, but doing research, we do know that we have more trailer owners than we do food trucks.
But if you get.
Make sure everybody come here.
It ain't, if if you got that in your own, but you're not getting to sign up and pay the city, it's really still not doing nothing.
Since we didn't have an ordinance in place for trailers, now, hopefully we can, right, hopefully we will, and I promise you that if we might have a lot of people, a person who owns a trailer, and in your yard, you sit it there, and they're ready to roll.
Right, but it's.
They're waiting on tonight.
It's definitely a good thing, y'all should pass it, you know what I'm saying? Just make it come alive on the price, and put them on level playing ground, whichever one they want to go by, that's on me. I'm just saying, that moves it forward, that helps the city, and the city benefit from it, that's all.
But as I've talked too much about this, I mean, my God, we've been discussing for years, okay? So let's look at it this way, we if we go ahead and vote on the original ordinance, and swing back around and create amendment, and amend them at both at a thousand dollars. Like roster board, and some universal call, so when they show up down there, it's a food truck or a food truck slash trailer license or whatever, however, we're gonna call it the system, a thousand bucks, and let's call it the night.
Well, we'll just slash it down a million, twelve hundred.
Okay, if you're twelve hundred.
That's close to it.
Yeah, close to it, we're talking about.
So we're not like, uh, we're not gonna price it and just go ahead and vote.
All right, so wait a second, let's. Yeah, well, wait a second, you gotta vote first, either way, and then, and then, and then, and then, right? All right, all right, so, roll call.
Mr. Urban?
Uh.
Microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
Who did she say?
She said microphone. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Councilwoman Smith?
May.
Councilwoman Case?
Running for clarity, this is to to vote on. As you have been.
No, we're not voting on the amendment, you're voting on the ordinance, and you're voting the ordinance now, because you're staying from the ordinance.
No, you said we're voting on the amendment.
No, you're not voting on the amendment.
Voting on this part.
You're not voting on the amendment, you're voting on the fricking ordinance.
We just said to vote to amend.
You're gonna amend it later.
Okay.
Back to it.
We did a back. Okay, that's, you had the amendment, you didn't go and vote for amendment. We've been doing it all night.
Okay.
You gonna be.
Amendment first, so I'm gonna. All right.
I know.
Twelve hundred dollars, you're talking about.
For both.
For both.
I can name it.
Food truck and trailer.
Stay from the earth.
And, okay. All right, go ahead.
So.
One second. No, we go all one, vote. Okay, all right.
You don't go all one?
Yeah, I'm ready, all right.
Councilwoman Smith?
May.
Councilwoman Case?
Vote on the amendment of twelve hundred dollars.
A twelve hundred dollar?
Yeah.
Yes, for both, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Delry?
All right.
President Urban?
Ah.
Councilwoman Decker?
Ah.
All right, the amendment is now twelve hundred bucks.
Now.
Now. Now, now we turn around and 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 vote again, we don't have public participation, anybody got questions? Okay, now, I think we need to move along, it's our turn.
Now say it, now say it.
All right, roll call again. Uh, are any council discussion?
None.
Okay, that'd be none. All right, roll call on.
You gotta, you gotta, all right, you gotta get a vote in a second.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So.
All right, okay, I got motion, it's second. Roll call.
And I'm gonna abstain.
Councilwoman Case?
Ah.
Councilwoman Delry?
Ah.
Mr. Urban?
Ah.
Councilwoman Decker?
Ah.
We now have food trucks and trailers in Volvo. The visualizing, we need to, we need the revenue, come on guys.
So each license, the last, help everybody, and.
They do have to be expected by losing out of department of health.
And make sure that you get everything expected through the Department of Health and National Security. And the reason, the reason why I said twelve hundred is makes it fair, so Mr. Roberts said it's split down the middle. Everybody's on one accord, it doesn't matter about the maintenance, so I'm gonna get several calls, but I do know, just from my research, we have more trailers than we do trucks, so when we get that call, we'll be ready. And the reason why I said it at twelve hundred is because it seems fair, I want the ordinance, and then I wanna write it, then turn around and hold it for sure. I do.
We got three more ordinances.
That's all right.
Yes.
Okay, and give me a picture of that.
I I have to make clarification, because a lot of people hate on my name, because we have a bunch of haters, so that's why I have to bring clarification.
Uh, this is Councilwoman Case, your local home ordinance.
An ordinance provide financial.
I'm sorry. Make your call.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
An ordinance, um, to amend ordinance of twenty ninety seven, division two, mobile homes, house trails, and non-conventional uh structures, um, number eight, section twenty one, two sixty one. Okay, this particular ordinance entails, there has been, um, at least we know five or six different uh houses, not mobile homes, but mobile homes in a sense where FEMA is allowing to control, and they are, they are allowing uh different uh homes to be replaced. These are non-conform homes, and with these non-conform homes, it has to be the same owner, it has to be the same uh, uh, if they have uh home, home state exemption, everything is is primarily the same for these individuals. Uh, they have to go through a planning and zoning, they have to conform to as if they are new uh trailers, uh, mobile home trails, but they're not mobile home trails, they have to have an extension uh to see if if their, if their particular uh, their uh actual uh neighbors approve within a five hundred foot radius, but these are, are, they're used for the same purpose of the homes. And I've got to read here a little bit about non-conforming use of mobile homes. Any mobile home presently located in a city at the time of an act of its consequent amendment, as an amendment of of chapter, division two, mobile homes, uh, home trails, and uh non-conventional structures. Okay, these particular uh structures, section twenty one, that's twenty six, two sixty one, which are located uh accordingly to the existing uh regulations, that but not conform with the provisions thereof may be continued in such non-conforming use by this present uh owner. So these are the same property owners, uh, we have, uh, as I said, FEMA, uh, Louisiana Restore, they're coming back, they're putting these these trailers back in place, some of these folks have not had uh appropriate trailers uh since uh twenty, since uh the actual uh two thousand and five Katrina, some of them since two thousand sixteen. So they're just catching up with with these particular trailers, to replace these trailers. This is not to break in mobile homes, because mobile homes technically are not outlawed in the city of Volvo. Okay, these are homes that are being uh brought back in by FEMA, where individuals can have a a particular uh home state, and they can uh more or less marate the bottom of it. It says, however, if any non-conforming uh mobile homes presently located in the city is sold to another person, okay, or is ever uh removed from that site, the procedure and the conditions thereof shall be followed before such mobile homes can uh remain in such site, or before any other mobile homes uh can be placed on that site. So once again, it's the same owner, uh, it's the same uh size trailer, uh, most of them are single home trailers that these individuals, that these companies are bringing in for those individuals to get the, these homes that most likely, a lot of them have the vessels from the the old uh, the old uh particular.
Ms. Case, we really got people into FEMA.
No, we got, we got that, we. Okay, got that, yeah, okay, what we saying?
You really have people that live in FEMA trailers in Volvo?
They're not FEMA trails, FEMA trails are outlined, they're mobile homes.
So people are living in mobile homes in Volvo?
Mobile homes, mobile homes, that they were out there. This non-conforming means that their grandfather gave them.
Okay, so they're gonna get, FEMA's gonna get on a new mobile home?
Yes, they're 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 paying, they're paying through uh, uh.
From natural disasters.
Yeah, from natural disasters only.
So how long proof is natural disaster?
They are in on the record.
They're on the record, and they get information from FEMA.
So they have reported it already, it's not on record, and they won't qualify?
No, no, they have reported it, they've reported it.
I asked, I said, so if they haven't reported it, it's not on record, they won't qualify?
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, it looks like lady here earlier, she kind of talked on the uh situation, but she was asking, you know, she lives in a mobile home now.
Yes.
And her mobile home is starting to fall apart, and she was asking if she would be able to get another one to put it in the same spot.
Not unless it's pre-approved by FEMA.
Okay.
It has to be pre-approved to by FEMA.
And she have already on the air.
Some, some.
Now to say she's getting her owners not going through the FEMA to.
Oh, no, but it has, that's the guideline.
She have the, already on the lease, the already permitted.
Right, and ready by the seizure, I have uh the different uh handouts.
All right, can I make a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, public discussion? Any questions? All this is doing is allowing those people that uh went through either the Katrina or one of those big famous storms, to make a life for life trailer, is not circumventing our uh current ordinance, uh, they will have to provide proof of that, and that they are, uh, their trailer has been damaged, everybody understands, and public discussion. Counselor discussion.
One of the council discussions is that uh planning zone has a very important part in this. Planning zone, it has a checklist that these individuals will be provided, they will go through planning zone, it's a big thick packet that uh that has to be provided, the planning zone for. I know what you're saying, uh, councilwoman does on that individual, she shared with me that it was FEMA, but I found out later that it was.
So we show, we know beyond the shadow of doubt, that they cannot circumvent our ordinance, that they can bring in a newly established uh single wide, right? Because it's very clear.
Right, they they have to provide the the schedule, if I have it with me, I'll show everybody.
So if their trailer was damaged in the storm, in a particular storm.
Right.
It will place life for life, okay?
Right, life for life, exactly.
Any other questions? All right, any other question, okay? All right, any other question, okay, roll call please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Council, Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary?
Aye.
President Arden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, so those people with FEMA waivers or whatever, in this case will be able to.
It's a simple, that, that checklist, the planning and zoning.
And remember, this can be, uh, invoked by the council at any time, tell you that, cause if we found that otherwise, okay? So, all right, moving along. Uh, now we're at the ordinance to authorize the mayor in, uh, okay, this is Councilwoman Temples. I'm gonna read it, so ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter an agreement with SRI Professional Services to assist with the language tax sale process. Now, Mr. Bailey, how much are they gonna charge us and where is he gonna come from? I'll try to simplify this.
Well. It's my understanding, this, this is a few group of people.
Right.
Uh, we're currently working with, uh, under a, an organization called Civic Source.
Yes.
And, uh, it's my understanding that, first of all, you have to understand that there's a lot of official paperwork not being taken, that has to take place. We, uh, are dealing with selling, uh, adjudicated property, so to speak. And, and this, uh, ordinance with this company, it basically is, uh, aimed at abandoned blighted property. It's very difficult to try to sell somebody's property when they're living in it. And their property is being adjudicated. It can be done, but there's, there's certain things that you, certain rules you have to follow. But when you deal with blighted and abandoned properties, when you have an outstanding tax bill that's been adjudicated three year, at least three years, we can sell that property. We can attach it and sell it. And this company will do all of the work that needs to be done in, in, uh, you know, providing the documentation and the official and all that stuff that takes place to sell that property. Now, they, in that contract, I looked at it, and they have different stages in which they're gonna charge you. The bottom line is, is that all of those stages, no matter what the cost is, I, I think the highest one I saw was four hundred and forty-four dollars per parcel of, uh, land. And, uh, the lowest one was a hundred dollars. But the bottom line is those, those costs are gonna be attached to the tax that's over the city.
So the city next one will be out of little money?
No, no.
Inside.
So basically, it'll, it'll be out of no money.
Okay.
And I think the reason that we're changing over to this system here is because Civic Source, I did a, uh, audit on them and, uh, they're supposed to be operating under the same conditions that this contract does and, uh, I, I, I noticed that we paid them three hundred thousand dollars more than they paid us. And so I'm in the process of trying, I, I wanted to talk to their representatives. I gave them the paperwork that we have, that shows them the difference and why. And, you know, the bottom line is, I'm gonna ask for that money back if they don't, uh.
You know that, you know that Civic Source contract has an auto renewal clause. Do you have a renewal clause, please?
I don't get it, I, I think I read that contract, I think.
So somebody have to have the auto renewal clause? Auto renewal clause?
Thirty days, thirty, thirty, if you can cancel thirty day.
Okay, so you, you while talking about.
Yeah, thirty day, thirty day cancellation clause.
Now, we, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a motion and a second, so we open up the public discussion, okay? Hang on one second, I'm, I'm, I said, I'm gonna make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all right, that's what I asked for. All right, so we got motion, second, we're opening public discussion. I need to say one thing before Mr. Tobias starts. In the state of Louisiana, very important to get the city out of legal problems. We need to make it very clear and wash our hands of this, because this can come back, buy this and buy it. Uh, rent packing, grant that, and you can come back years down the road, okay? In the state of Louisiana, okay, under nineteen seventy-two, you can go way back in time and claim, that is my property, I own it back, that's why you're buying taxes on right now. If you have built a house on that thing, okay, this is what I'm saying, you will actually lose any improvements. It happened in Jefferson Parish to this Civic Source guy that sued the title company, the title, title company. So I would even go myself, however, require them, the buyer, to have title insurance because I saw in here, they don't require you to have title insurance, the new company don't. So to unify, we gotta unify the city somehow, because in that case, the mayor could actually technically sell properties and, and for sales tax, that's what I'm trying to say. But anyway, well, I'm not a lawyer, but I do know, we have been battling this, Mr. Bailey, for twelve years. For twelve years, through planning and zoning and all that, way back in time. And I'm gonna tell you something else, no offense to Civic Source, I'm sure they work great in Jefferson Parish, we're all property tonight. Now, you can sell them properties, but over here, nobody can buy ten by, ten by ten property for a thousand dollars plus their fees and all that, those crazy fees. Now, I'm okay with charging their fee a hundred and sixty or whatever it is, four hundred plus our taxes. I'm okay with that, but why I wasn't okay with this Civic Source charging five grand plus, plus our taxes, that's ridiculous. That's why you have to move things, uh, on that. But there, there are certain few things attorney's made, I do wanna point out about this and we do need to make sure before we engage into the agreement with this SRI. It sounds good to me, because anything can move seven hundred properties, six, seven hundred, seven hundred, how to say? Adjudicated property back to tax roll, it was wide enough. Now, where is these properties, are they gonna be auctioned off or what?
Right, that was my question.
Yeah.
How would they be sold and how can, you know, the residents of Bogalusa take advantage of what y'all doing, you know? Cause the citizens, yeah, how, how, how would they go about that, that, that was my question.
They have a site, we would gradually do that site, you know, I'd find out myself, I don't really know. But once we get them, that's what you guys know we on, we will tell you how, how they will go to their site and they, you can see on there what the property is worth, they'll show you all the adjudicated properties. And basically, what you see is, is abandoned adjudicated properties, you know?
So, so would, would, would somebody be able to come in with a bunch of money and just buy all of them up and then sell them at a high price, would you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of what it's all about. A lot of people don't know this, when a property is adjudicated, like my example of you. If you, your property is adjudicated, anybody in, uh, in, uh, the so did, could go pay your taxes. You know, they, they send your paper down in the papers, they could go, she could go pay your taxes.
Mm-hmm.
And she's starting, uh, ownership of your property.
Right.
Because of what I told you, it's very difficult to take a house away from somebody when they're living in it. You know, most people don't wanna do that, but usually, you know, a lot of them, it's, uh, an old age, you know? You taking their property away. But, but, but the bottom line is, is that, uh, that person can pay your taxes, you can go five years and not pay your taxes, that person will pay your taxes for five years. But when it gets into that five year category.
Right.
You, they can possibly take it away from you.
All right.
But that's hard to do, I mean, it's still hard to do out there, which, which.
Yeah, that, that was my question, that was my.
All right, um, I need to say one other thing too. We have a thing called, in the state of Louisiana, called Napoleonic Law. Uh, we've entered this with realtors, you can, you're welcome to look this up attorney's aid. I know not, I don't expect a city attorney to know about these things, I'm just throwing this thing out. It's called Napoleonic Law, one time, state of Louisiana was under French law and under Napoleonic Law from eighteen oh three, eighteen oh four. It, it actually states you never truly have a deed to that property even though you sold it off, okay? That your property technically won't be your property as long as nobody comes and complains it for thirty years, okay? In the state of Louisiana, that we have strong property rights and you're welcome to look it up. Okay, we have, and I want to say this, and I don't want to take my whole real estate attorney's because I don't have the permission to name and open a council, but we have been back and forth with this for years. And if this company is willing to take a stand and clear this up, honestly, it's done throughout municipal, senior. I'm on board, but however, I want to make it clear to a, clear to the purchaser. Where you pay Civic Source SRI, you pay Civic Source all the big fees, or SRI is the dollar short fees, senior, we'll call it, okay? Whoever you're paying those fees to, after you own that piece of property, the bank will not allow a mortgage on that piece of property without clear deed. They want the deed to the bank before they gonna go ahead and mortgage it, it's a problem.
I, I do have council discussion.
Just closing that.
Right, I do have council discussion, uh, and, and they, I mean, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna close.
Attorney, attorney, uh, Ray, I'm gonna come to your face, of course you know about Napoleonic Law. You, you, you're Louisiana attorney. Okay, now, now with SRI, with my research with SRI, uh, I want to say that our, our parish, uh, has built SRI before. And in reference to the deeds for this adjudicated property, we do also have a area called a Department of, uh, State, uh, yeah, Department of State Funds, that state lands, that goes through this, the actual information we have on that property. And those state lands, if they're, if, if it's state educated, it's market educated, uh, if those lands are sold, those lands if, can be bought back by, uh, by the owners. And those owners will have the opportunity, uh, to buy them back for X number of funds. That's if, if those, uh, departments, they go all the way back to the seventeen hundreds.
It has to be doing the redemption period.
Exactly.
Time at some point, if they buy it back from you, they have to pay.
Oh, they definitely have to pay back.
All the money that you put out, uh, this.
Yes.
This should be an improvement or whatever you have.
Right, that has to be paid, but. The opposite, but, uh, Civic Source, we've been dealing with Civic Source for, for a number of years, uh, now and, uh, I think the minimum amount to pay with Civic Source is eight thousand dollars. Uh, that's the minimum amount that you could, you could pay. But, uh, this particular, uh, company sounds like it may be a little bit.
Yeah, let's try it out, let's see if it's wrong.
All right. I think, I think we're, uh, and it does say that there, uh, this is gonna be for one year. My agreement, I was sitting there, uh, thinking, and it says, either party can walk away with this with thirty day witness. I think that that gives the city a way out.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I believe that, uh, this is willing to be tried because this would, if this works, even if you do a hundred properties within the next ten years, we've done something that previous auction companies have been able to do, and I'm willing to count it, let's have a roll call.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary?
Aye.
President Robbins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're getting on the last one, please. And this is a, uh, okay, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to guarantee a lease agreement at the Marshall Charter School. All right, we had no representative, I didn't see any show up from the charter school. All right, uh, I wanna hear, uh, well, first off, let's make a motion.
I'm having a motion too.
Okay?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, let's open up the public discussion. Administration, do you have a comment? So bottom line.
It's a, it's a straight, uh, non-sam, it's submitted by Bogalusa to a few officers on streets. It's a straight deal, she accepted it, she actually sent a check to us, we told, we could not accept that check until it was approved by you. Uh, it was one through the legislative order, and as the order said, we're welting our rights to actually increase, the women increased, and we did it, uh, we did it with all, all laws in mind. So therefore, she, they agreed to it and, and they're, and she brought it back, we just have to go through the legal process of having you, uh, have it go to the council.
For the record, state how much it is annual?
Sixty, uh, sixty-five hundred dollars a month, which is. Second.
Seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy-eight thousand, yeah.
That's a year.
Yeah, seventy thousand, seventy-eight thousand, yes.
Seventy-eight thousand, breaks it down to about sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred a month.
Sixty-five hundred a month, that's for two years, right?
Right, and, and, and this starts from the arrears, that's from last August. Because, uh, we've been very lenient as, as a city, as a city, uh, allowing them, while we go through the process to stay, and, and, and.
And when will their lease be out?
Uh, this August, exactly, it's a two year lease starting from last August.
Okay, so August of twenty-five?
Uh-huh.
So August of twenty-five.
Have they paid anything over last year?
They paid on, they, they, uh, they've only paid the fifty, uh, fifty hundred, because we were not in agreement right there, at the one.
So they, they paid fifty hundred one time?
Right.
In a whole year?
Oh, yeah. No, there were, no, here's the thing, the reason, the, the reason why, we, they actually sent us a check before, actually, Ms., uh, Ms. Case talked with them as well, the first check was for, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars. So we've been back and forth, we dropped a couple of checks back, and we, and we've given back because we knew we go through city council. So we even had one contract, she, she brought, signed and notarized without the approval of city council. So we brought it back to it. So it's been a back and forth deal to where they've been sending checks and then we're back and she comes and blasts us in front of everybody like we're the evil from within.
Right, we know, now, we know for a long time, the mayor gonna turn her call, our email.
That's not true, that's not true, that's not true.
Oh, that, that's absolutely true.
No, it's not true, because I, I was, I was in all those emails.
Okay, well, I was also in the meeting as well, attorney made, and Mr. Perry had a meeting with her because of refusal of administration to meet with her.
No, I actually was in those meetings with, with, with Perry, with, with Perry Smalls, and we, and the last time.
You just took me talking with attorney?
No, that, that was, that was a separate one, he actually, he actually stayed the last, the last, uh, uh, agreement with them. And they, and they met with the national, they said, can you have a choice?
Big, we ain't got done, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're done with this, we're just waiting for you guys to approve it, so we can get going and get this done.
All right, so you heard all that from the administration, we'll say this much. Heard all that about the lease agreement, the lease agreement will end in August of twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
This for sixty-five hundred a month.
Right.
Seventy-eight thousand a year, uh, this is for Marshall Charter School, which is located on Walker Street, one eleven Walker Street, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
All right, one eleven Walker Street, if I'm not mistaken, I left in memory. Uh, so, then at this time, is there any other, we're gonna move to any other council discussion?
I have a council discussion. Okay, if you read on page one of your lease, it indicates the period starts from, uh, August first, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
To July thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
At annual rate of seventy-eight thousand dollars, monthly rate of sixty-five hundred dollars.
First year, yes.
And, uh, the second period is from August first, twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
To, uh, July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, which the, the total amount is, uh, eight thousand, three hundred and forty thousand with a monthly grant of six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars.
That for a second year?
Excuse me?
For the second year.
Yeah, for the second year, okay. So, uh, this was discussed, and I discussed this with Mr., Mr. Bailey on, it mentioned of the, those funds from, for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, when would the. for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, when would the amount be adjusted within our, within our budget? And from what I understand, when we get the twenty twenty-two uh closeout, those amounts uh would be adjusted for um that uh seventy-eight thousand dollars. Because now it's showing, you know, a certain amount that we don't know where it is within the budget, but it will be, it will be adjusted.
It will be a revenue item, it will.
All right, any other council discussion? I don't know.
I do have a council discussion. Um so these prices based on, I have spoke to Ms. Dee, but not with the new prices prior to. Mr. Sanders just stated that um Ms. Dee is agreement of it, the charter school, a check has been written out for six thousand five hundred to the city of Bogalusa, correct?
After more than that, sixty-six thousand.
Okay.
Which is.
Which lets us know that she's in agreement with it, paying from period eight oh one, twenty-three to seven thirty-one, twenty-four. And um basically, it's gonna go up to six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Just um not a rocket scientist, but looking out for the future, probably gonna be ending up with a empty lot over there. Vacancy with these prices. Uh but Ms. Dee isn't here to answer that. I spoke to Mr. Sanders, he said it is off the square footage. And he did explain to me and broke it down into great detail. I'm not gonna go into all that because he did a fabulous job with getting me to understand. Thank you, Mr. Sanders, for that, and I definitely appreciate your time.
I want, thank you, John. I think Mr. Sanders, we're simplifying that for us. Now, the question I have now, can they be granted at least one year extension?
Yep, look.
At the same rate?
Uh well, no, we we actually have, we actually have, she actually asked us for a ten-year contract.
Right.
The first time, we gave her a two-year contract because if she asked for it, she came back and said we want a ten-year contract. Then she came back and said she wants a two-year contract. So this has been a a back and forth. You see what I'm saying?
So so she counted you the two?
Yeah, then she counted, no, she first she counted the ten, then the two, then the ten again, then the three, then the ten, then the two again. So it was a bunch of, it was back and forth. So we actually agreed to this right here, it's here right now. And we're getting, for for what I've noticed, or what I've heard, that they're supposed to be buying a property or something like that somewhere.
Buying a property.
Well, yeah, they bought or they buying, I don't know. I mean, I cannot say yes or no to that. But I mean, I guess that's why they're doing it this way for two years, so.
Okay, now, any other council discussion?
I have one last question. Okay, Mr. Sanders.
Yes, ma'am.
Seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh for the year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Is that gonna pay as a yet?
That's what, that's that's what they're, after this right here, they're just gonna write a check to uh.
Actually, seven eight.
Yeah, because she turned in a check, but we can't accept that check until we get approved.
Okay.
So, yeah, so she has written a check and and dropped it off to the mayor. You know, but we cannot accept that until it goes through council procedures.
All right, roll call.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Aye.
All right, next, ladies, September twenty-third, thank you for your words and retail strategy. I did hear our legal department needs to discuss that.
We all want to hear what you say.
So maybe it's now during the ten forty.